And with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that noticed a little chill in the air, I understand that our finance director forgot to pay the heating bills, so trying to save some money, you know.
Are you clear that you're joking?
Of course, of course, of course, I'm only joking. First, second thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approve the agenda unless somebody else has any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move number 10 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
Okay. Anyone else? With that, then I'll entertain a motion with the amended agenda.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Support.
All those in favor of approving the amended agenda, moving number 10 from the consent agenda to regular agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Amended agenda is now approved. Item C on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the November 12, 2024 workshop. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the November 12, 2024 workshop. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are hereby approved. Item D, public comments or inquiries, did we have any this evening, Ms. Johnson? No, all right. Moving on to presentations, we have our public works director who has a presentation to make.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The City of Lake Elmo would like to recognize Jamie Colmer. He is our lead operator at Public Works and he has served us for 15 years. Jamie's hard work ethic, wealth of knowledge, drive to succeed, the drive to please, stay efficient and under budget is an asset that our department is lucky to have. Jamie works hard managing the department's vehicle and equipment maintenance. He's proficient operating our equipment, resourceful and completing challenges thrown at him at any time of the day, and he makes every effort to lead his crew as efficiently as he can. Jamie's always reliable, ready for action and willing to work as many hours as required of him. Jamie's a team player, strong leader, respectful and works great with the city residents. We hope to have Jamie around to help lead our team for many years to come. Again, we'd like to acknowledge Jamie's 15 years of service, his value dedication and the efforts he adds within the Public Works Department and the city. Jamie is a true asset and we are so thankful.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, say cheese. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think it's safe to pass by you. Oops, wrong seat. All right, then we have a presentation. Angie Hong, East Metro Water Education Program.
Which one did you want first? There was two. Oh, I just wanted to get the PowerPoint version. Probably is better than the... I got that and this one. Oh, okay. That one is more of just like a handout to include in the packet, so I don't need to present it. Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. Sorry to be a bit discomparated. I came from a wrestling meet and my son apparently broke his elbow, so there was a quick detour to T.C. Ortho on the way here, but I am here tonight to talk about water and natural resources support for you. And my name's Angie Hong. I have been working in partnership with Washington Conservation District and City of Lake Elmo for quite some time now, and you undoubtedly get lots of emails from me about once a month, including one this morning. So hopefully my name is familiar. I thought it might be helpful as we're moving into our next round of our education partnership. We renew our kind of collaborative partnership every three years, and I thought, hey, it's probably time to just kind of refresh you all on, you know, who we are, what kind of services are available through the Conservation District and the Watershed District and what we've got planned for the coming year. So the Washington Conservation District, Soil and Water Conservation District, it was established in 1942 in the wake of the Dust Bowl, and we exist completely for education and technical services. One of the things that the general public knows and likes us best for is that our office provides free site visits to anybody in the county, whether you have a farm, a commercial property, a tiny little lot in town, and provide education, connect people with grants, all sorts of advice on things that people might want to do, like is this buckthorn? What should I do about it? Can I plant a rain garden? Are there grants available? Our office also helps to do origin control inspections. They do the AIS watercraft inspections at the public boat launches, implement the Wetland Conservation Act inspections and maintenance support, and they host the East Metro Water Education Program. There are also watershed districts that exist in the community of Lake Elmo, and the majority of the city sits in the Valley Branch Watershed District, but there is a portion of the city that's in Browns Creek Watershed District and a portion that's down in the South Washington Watershed District. And watershed districts were created to help prevent against flooding and to protect and restore lake and stream water quality. So one of the things that people who live in the community like best about watershed districts is that they have stewardship grants, meaning that people can apply for grants that might be $500 or they might be $2,000 to do projects like restoring their lakeshore, building a rain garden, managing invasive species. They do also have permit programs for new development and redevelopment to try to make sure that as communities are growing, we don't create flooding for people who live downstream and also, you know, keep our lakes and streams in as good of condition as possible. So 2006, the Conservation District, the Watershed Districts, Washington County and many of the cities in our area came together and created this shared water education program, which we call the East Metro Water Education Program, or EMREP. Lake Elmo's been a member of EMREP since 2009, and it's a way for us to do collaborative education that's bigger than any of the communities or partners might be able to do on their own with limited budgets and limited staffing. In Lake Elmo, I don't have to tell you this part, but you've got a lot of great stuff going on. So in terms of natural resources, you are really lucky to have this beautiful park preserve right in the middle of the community. I saw Tony Monzera as I was walking in the door and was really glad that I had a picture of Sunfish Lake Park with some kids from one of the nature camps that they hosted this summer, another really great gem in the community. And then, of course, there are very high-quality recreational lakes, which are known for being clean and clear. We've got Demont Traval, Jane and Olson, affectionately known as the Tri-Lakes, and then Lake Elmo as well. And pictured there is one of our watercraft inspectors helping to try to prevent the spread of zebra mussels and Eurasian water milfoil. You are also undoubtedly very familiar with the challenges that come with our water resources in the area. You know, Lake Elmo is kind of at the epicenter of the PFOS contamination issues, so that has unfortunately made its way into Eagle Point Lake, Lake Elmo, and this smaller lake called H.J. Brown. But then over on Lake Jane, we were also somewhat surprised in 2022 to find that the Pollution Control Agency was issuing a new impairment. Lake Jane has very clean water quality, but it does not have as many fish and insects and biota as what it used to. And so this is a challenge that we're actually seeing in some other lakes in northern Washington County and southern Chicago County, and in a lot of cases is coming from having shoreline development and just not as much habitat along the shoreline for the nesting birds, the turtles and, you know, the other species. So those are a couple of concerns that we're looking at in this area. And just to give you a brief overview of some of the things that we've got planned for 2025 for education goals and activities, we spend the lion's share of our time focusing on public education and engaging public and private landowners on restoring landscapes, planting native gardens and planting rain gardens, especially in priority locations where we know it will help to create habitat corridors or to protect our lakes and rivers from runoff pollution. We do a lot of work with schools and volunteer groups. We are participating in the Blue Thumb Planting for Clean Water Program, and that is the website where people can also go to apply for law and state legumes grants. It's yet another grant that people can get to create native gardens on their property, and really just trying to think of all the different ways that we can engage with people in the places they live and the activities that they do. I mentioned that the shoreline development has become a concern in recent years. So this past year, we spent a lot of effort on educating and connecting with people who own shoreline properties, realtors selling shoreline properties, contractors who are doing work on shoreline properties, and just creating resources to help people take care of their lakeshore in a way that they can enjoy it and it still provides a home for, you know, the fish, the turtles, the frogs, all those kinds of wildlife. Promoting conservation development, this is something that, you know, as we grow and continue to grow in Washington County, we, like I said before, want to make sure that we maintain those beautiful places that we love so much, that we maintain the clean, clear water that we all enjoy having. There's some really excellent, excellent examples of conservation development in Lake Elmo that I know I frequently brag about and share with people from other cities. And we are always doing education for local officials. You probably all get an invitation from me every year for our St. Croix River Workshop on the Water when we go out in the St. Croix River and, you know, have a little bit different focus and information every year. The main reason that the city is a partner in EMREP is to help meet its stormwater education requirement, which is something that the Pollution Control Agency requires the city to do. And, you know, so we're sending out monthly emails with all sorts of information about things like picking up your dog poop and not using too much salt during the winter time, why we want to rake up leaves, all these different things. I'm excited to report that 73 storm drains in Lake Elmo have been adopted by volunteers. So I think that's something pretty cool and worthy of celebrating, that people are willing to do something pretty monotonous in the sake of having clean water, which is basically they're just going out there and they're sweeping up all the gok in front of their storm drain to keep it from going down and ending up in a nearby lake or river. And then lastly, but certainly not least important, trying to build a community of environmental change, building community connections and just helping to strengthen all of that citizen capacity. So we have a lot of volunteer groups that we work with. We have trained in water stewards. We're very actively partnering with nonprofit organizations and, like I said, supporting youth education all along. One of the new volunteer programs that we are going to be starting this coming year is a tree stewards program. So that will be a group of volunteers, very much like master gardeners, except they're specifically trained in how to take care of trees and can be working with their local communities on things like caring for newly planted trees or pruning trees. So look for more information about that coming out sometime soon. And just because I am up here and you most often hear from me, I thought I should also point out a few of the other people who do education in the area. Jessica Saquetelli just started in April, and she's going to be our lead for volunteer coordination, and she is also doing some work with older youth. Hannah and Lori are with us temporarily as part of an AMERICO or Climate Impact Program, so they've been doing really great work. Hannah primarily with homeowners associations and Lori working with schools, but we only get them until July, so we only get them for a couple more months. And then Barbara Height Camp is coordinating education for the Lower St. Croix Partnership, which is kind of an overlapping partnership we have in our region. And so she and I very frequently work together as a team, even though she has a different source of funding for her position. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or let you carry on with your meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hong? We appreciate you delivering that information. We're, of course, water is very important to everybody, so thank you for your efforts on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F, we have the consent agenda. Number two is approved payment of disbursements. Number three is approved 2025 meeting calendar. Number four is authorized certification of delinquent stormwater bills and utility bills, resolution 2024-124. Number five is approved animal control contract update. Number six, reappoint parks commissioners. Number seven, accept donation of fire department, resolution 2024-125. Number eight, approve special event permit for light up Lake Elmo. Number nine, approve East Metro Water Resource Education Program, EMREP, renew 2025-2027 shared water resource education program agreement. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as reference, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is hereby approved. Moving into our regular agenda, we have approved pedestrian crosswalk marking policy and marking recommendations. Jack Griffin, present.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you may recall, I think it was going back last April, the council directed staff to work on preparation of a crosswalk policy, and in doing so, we also investigated a handful of intersections along Laverne Avenue and 39th Street, sort of to test the policy and make sure that we were landing on something that the city was happy with adopting and was getting the results that met our goals. In September, we presented the draft policy and the presentation and recommendations of how that played out with those intersections, and we received some council input to make a couple revisions, clean it up and bring it back for final adoption. So we're here tonight to present that to you. Chris Brown with SRF, who's been working on it for us, is here to answer any questions that still might be a little over my head that I'm unable to answer. So I'll go through real quick as a summary. You know, we started off, we wanted to make sure we had a policy that was responsive to our residents, that was clear and transparent, easy to read, easy to understand, also easy to implement, not a lot of work effort going into it. The council, back in April, had been presented with a handful of different examples across communities, and it seemed pretty unanimous that the council had really been attracted to a four-page Blaine example, but also wanted a flowchart example that was found in the Egan policy. So that's what we sort of set out to present to you here, and also wanted to make sure it was a consistent process that came up with a consistent result for what we were looking for. So just some quick background, as we talk about crosswalks, you know, there's different streets, there's different kinds of settings that are out there that we want to be wary of. So it's important to remember that whether it's marked or unmarked, legal crosswalks do exist. So, and I emphasize that just because as we get resident calls, what we'll often hear is there might be ped ramps at an intersection, but because there's no marking on the street, you'll hear the residents say there's no crosswalk. And from a legal standpoint and statute and everything, those crosswalks are legal crosswalks, whether they're marked or unmarked. So that markings isn't what designates a crosswalk. So they really, from a legal standpoint, they exist at all intersections, in particular that you have trails and sidewalks leading into them. Also, Minnesota statutes has a lot of definitions for guiding the right of way and what's to transpire. So at a crosswalk, whether it's marked or unmarked, if a pedestrian enters the crosswalk, from a legal standpoint, the vehicle is required to yield to that pedestrian until the pedestrian has cleared the driveline. On the flip side, if a pedestrian crosses mid-block or between the intersections where there isn't, it is the pedestrian's responsibility to yield to the vehicle. So these are all provided in statute and laid out. So this is all already set up, but it's important to understand as we lead into a policy. And then there's studies out there, and there's, I think if you did a lot of research, you'd find studies that argue marked crosswalks are safer, and there's studies out there that prove that they're not necessarily safer if they're marked. So there's a lot of information on this topic. You'll find some that contradict each other. In general, we tend to believe, you know, it's like a lot of traffic combing devices, like a lot of signage, the primary thing is if you overuse a device, there's some kind of a traffic device, it's going to lose its effectiveness. So the more you use it, the less effective it becomes. So the idea is to really focus your use is where it's most important and has the best effect. So with those kind of guiding principles, we'll dive into what we came up with. So I want to talk about, we came up with a policy that talks about some of the different intersections. So the first one is the always stop or a traffic signal. It's probably, when you have a traffic signal, it's going to be pretty common that you're going to mark those crosswalks. So if you have a traffic signal and you have sidewalks and trails coming into it, we're saying in our policy, we will mark those intersections. Typically, if you have a traffic signal or if you have an always stop, four stop signs in all direction, or a T-intersection with three stops, generally you only have those devices because there's a lot of traffic coming into that intersection. Otherwise, it's probably an inappropriate stop sign. And that would be the first thing you do is pull out stop signs if there's no traffic to justify it. So assuming that the always stop or the signal is appropriate for that intersection, there's enough traffic that exists there that we feel the best policy is to just, by default, we'll mark those crosswalks. The second kind of intersection then is, if you look at the bottom part, a side street stop control. So in this case, you have one direction that's uncontrolled crossing where it's a through traffic, and you have the opposing traffic that has to stop at a stop sign. And in this case, there's a lot of these kinds of intersections. In this case, the default would be to not mark, where the stop sign is, there would be no crosswalk. The stop sign is really there to serve the yielding and the right of way, the vehicles being required to stop. Pedestrian can see the vehicle stop and then enter into the crosswalk fairly safely. They're not passing through it. Two other quick intersections that I'll jump into is just roundabouts. At roundabouts, you typically will have trails and sidewalks coming into them. They're a very specific thing. Typically, you're putting roundabouts like you would a traffic signal or a always stop. You have uniform traffic usually coming from different directions. There's a lot of design guidance on roundabouts, so we just leave it to whatever the design guides are for that roundabout in the engineering. And that's how our policy reads, we just leave it to whatever's according to that engineering design. And then mid-block crossings, we wanted to make sure it's important to state that mid-block crossings should be discouraged for the most part. If you have a traffic signal close by or always stop, you want to guide the pedestrian facility to that intersection and cross there where you are already controlling the traffic, the flow of traffic. There are going to be instances, and we have one that we just put in in the Hudson Boulevard, where if you look at where the pedestrians are coming from, they're coming from the west, it was unlikely that you'd see them walk past the Dairy Queen, walk 1,500 feet past it, cross at Keats Avenue, and then walk another 1,500 feet back. So that's a good instance where the distance and the gap distance is just too far to reasonably expect the pedestrian to take that very long route. And therefore, when we had the opportunity and the Dairy Queen went in, we put in a mid-block crosswalk. And when we're going to put in a mid-block crosswalk, it'll be our policy that you will mark that and possibly even put additional enhancements in there, like we did do a raised median and center refuge area to make the split, the crossing up a little bit. So then the last type of controlled intersection, or uncontrolled intersection, so I'll go back to this drawing. So this is the through traffic. It might have side stop coming into it, but where the vehicle is going to continue through without being stopped in any way is what we call the uncontrolled intersections. And so for these intersections, that's the focus of the flowchart. So for those intersections, what we'll do is we'll either mark or not mark a crosswalk based on this flowchart and the elements of this policy. And we started by saying that the existing ADT or average daily traffic of the roadway needs to be at least 1,000 vehicles. And we had presented a drawing at the workshop right here. In the light blue are the roadways that currently exceed 1,000 ADT. So if someone comes in and asks for a crosswalk and it's on a roadway that's not meeting that threshold, our default would be we're going to leave it unmarked. And this helps us, this helps us by alleviating overusing the crosswalk marking and only saving it for the cases where, and the thousand average daily traffic was a pretty industry standard as SRF had researched what was going on around. It's a pretty common threshold that's being used. So the first checkbox in the flow chart is it has to meet a thousand to qualify for further evaluation. That moves you back down to the second step. It also has to meet one of the following three thresholds on on that in the next chart. And that's one, either you have to have, meet the threshold of minimum pedestrian traffic. So if the if the request comes in or if the intersection's being evaluated and it has a thousand ADT, the next thing we would do is we would put cameras out at the intersection and we would do a count of the pedestrian thresholds. And if it meets our pedestrian thresholds, then that checks that box. If it doesn't meet that, we would also look at crashes, documented crashes for pedestrian bicycle facility. And and we'd also look at the type of crash to make sure that the crosswalk would would in fact mitigate that crash. That would be another way that it would check the second box. Or the third one is, we talked about directly serves a school or park. So a park or a school is directly adjacent to that crosswalk or a key destination. And a key destination, I'll talk about a little bit more detail later, but that was, we talked about like having the walkable downtown. And there's certain routes that we want to direct pedestrians, the rooftops basically out in the neighborhoods, into our central business district. So we'll define where those routes are. And then if it's on that key destination, that's sufficient, whether there's enough pedestrian traffic today or not. So if it meets that qualification, then it's just really a continued engineering evaluation to make sure that we look at the site distances to make sure that it's safe, that there's not an obstruction in the way. If there's obstructions in the way and it's not a safe place to cross, that would be a reason not to. We'd look at the potential of removing the obstruction if it's there and work our way through the flow chart. So it's really those top two boxes are the main are the main criteria. So I showed you, right now we have sixteen point two miles of streets that would be considered. The minimum pedestrian and bicycle volumes, this is what we had come up with based on council direction. We we showed you different examples where some communities just had one threshold, twenty twenty ped bicycle crossings in one twenty-four hour period and so forth. And the way this, we have an appendix that spells out how this has arrived at. And basically what you do is you do a count for twenty-four hours. And then you take of that twenty-four hours, you break your increments in the twenty-four hours and you find the four hours that have the highest counts. And then you compare to this chart. And if one of those hours is exceeding twenty, it meets the threshold. If none of them meet twenty, but two of them meet fifteen, two of those top four hours meet the fifteen, then you, then it would qualify three of, three with ten or four with five. And so if it meets any of those different thresholds, it meets the the pedestrian threshold. And that that, having that bracket helps you with types of intersections that might just have a peak morning and then it's dead the rest of the time, or it might have one that's just more continuous throughout the day. So it kind of can capture those different types of situations. Pedestrian crash history, that's public data if it's a documented crash. So that, as I mentioned, if we had a crash, that would check the criteria, whether the pedestrian count is there or not. As a note in the italics there, the last ten years when we looked at the system, all of the pedestrian crashes that have been reported are on the county highway system. So to date, in the last ten years, we don't have any on city roads that have been documented. And then the key destination, I drew up this map as sort of an example of my thought of what a key destination would look like. And the council can adopt this here as part of the policy or this can be brought back by the planning department to sort through a little bit more or tweak. That would be at a council discretion, but this is kind of my idea of looking at your downtown Musa area, looking at where you're developing the residential neighborhoods and then looking at the trail system that we're building, the key trail trail system to direct that traffic into your central business district and then reaching out. So this is sort of my idea of what I would consider sort of a key destination route for your old village. And then the last, the last thing was the, the final check, once it checks those thresholds, is looking at the intersection, the physical characteristics of the intersection to make sure that adequate site distance is there for the pedestrian crossing to be to be safe. So then the last part of the policy, we did take some additional information. So it is a short policy as the council had kind of directed, but we did leave some other information in there that we thought was educational, useful. So if this is on your website, the public can can access it. And those include, you know, we have a detailed description of our evaluation process, talking about how we would take counts and how we break, how we get to those numbers, including the data that would be collected. We have some information on state statutes in more detail, definitions of a pedestrian, definitions of a crosswalk. We have crosswalk marking definitions, crossing control definitions, and then some information on different infrastructure treatments that can also be done at at crosswalks. But that's all educational, not really part of the policy, but useful for someone that becomes interested in this. So I'll stop there and before I go on to the two intersections that we're talking about marking in twenty twenty-five and see if the council has any questions on the policy at this time.
Let's member Beckstrom.
Yeah, I've just got a couple of questions and maybe they're just clarifications. So with the the policy, is there a distinction between a trail crossing versus a sidewalk crossing?
No, they're both, and if you have one on each side, they're both considered crossings.
Okay. And the other just had to do with the mid-block crossings. And there's one, one in particular that comes to mind in Eastern Village on Village Parkway that's mid-block and speeds of thirty mile an hour and traffic's going to be increasing. And I think in the policy, it indicates if we allow this type of crossing that it it will be marked. And so are we going to be evaluating some of those potential crosswalks across the city? The mid-block and addressing those? Or do we need residents to to raise that as a question or concern?
I, that's a good question. I think the first step is to really get to the policy. And then there's a, there's a question, you don't want to have to feel pressured to automatically immediately get out there and do them all or analyze all of them. But I think there should be a systematic process of now, once the policy is adopted, is for public works and engineering to start taking a look at. We, we know we have, we presented examples at the workshop of markings that are out there that shouldn't be out there. There'll be a question of just, we just wait till we seal coat that street and we don't replace it. Or I don't think we want to go out and just grind them all off everywhere where they're they're not appropriate. And then there's the question of the ones that are existing out there that that meet the policy that haven't been marked. And it'll probably be up to us to kind of start to attack those, you know, so many a year or something to kind of get it back up within the policy.
Follow up question. So just one last question on that. So if we approve this policy where we've got this stated about the mid, mid-block crossings and the need for their, them to be marked, approve this, move forward, and something happens at one of those crossings that's not marked yet, are we, are we liable at all in any way because our policy says that we will have those marked? I mean, does that open us up at all for any liability?
My understanding is no. I mean, I defer to the city attorney if she has a different opinion, but generally no, that you come up with the policies and then there's a time to work on things, especially things that are that are older. You know, we do the same thing where we come up with wider roads, we come up with, and you don't have to immediately go and bring everything up to that standard. It's more about when you come back and and address that street as an improvement, that you typically bring it up to standard.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Jack? Councilmember Holtz.
Could you just go back to the the map of the roads that are meeting a thousand? Okay, thank you.
That was it?
That one. All right, so you created a hypothetical map of, you know, what it may, what it may look like when we create, which we've said we wanted to, coming up probably in the new year, a key destination route. So on this, and you noted in the the agenda item, that Thirty Ninth, as it's going west and then it hits at, to go northbound onto Wildflower, that right now that does not meet the thresholds, but it would based upon this proposed map. So in the, with the motion tonight, we would be saying that yes, it should because it's reasonable to presume that a map similar to this would be moving forward.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll dive into that right now then. So we do, so we looked at the different intersections, there were two intersections. This is an example of Laverne Avenue and Thirty Ninth Street. So you had the side stop control at Laverne, Thirty Ninth Street is a through road. And then it it does exceed the thousand ADT because it's eighteen hundred. It's an uncontrolled intersection, the Thirty Ninth Street is a through road. And then you have the pedestrian counts where the thirteen, thirteen and three in those top three hours. So they, they exceed that, the policy if you adopt the policy as tonight. So that, this is a a crosswalk that we would, then in twenty twenty-five, we would recommend we set out to to mark. And as it's shown, you can see the signage that we recommend go with it, with the the pre-advanced signage. There's two on each side with the crosswalk. And then likewise, if you move down one intersection at Wildflower Drive, as councilmember Holtz just mentioned, it's almost an identical intersection. The one difference is the pedestrian count isn't quite there. And as it stands today, there is, the key destination route hasn't been adopted by the council. So we can either adopt it and then this would go in in twenty twenty-five with it. I also kind of think if we don't adopt it tonight, it's something we can work on through the winter and have an adopted one that's that's likely to include this intersection. And the plan would be that we'd be putting this in in twenty twenty-five because because it would be on the key destination route by that time, by the time we get around to actually doing the improvement. So that could go either way in the direction tonight. However, the council sees that.
One more question.
Yes, councilmember Beckstrom.
Just one more question on the, what did you refer to it as, the destination route? So, so am I correct that we're only identifying the Old Village area having a a key destination route versus some of our neighborhoods in the south that we're developing?
Yeah, I, that's the only, I guess in the context of what I was figuring is it really is the only, it really is the only path or it's the only one that has a central business district that you're centering and coming to. The other, the business district that's forming down south is really forming along a corridor that has pedestrian facilities, that has adequate traffic. They'll, it'll probably be marked where the key crossings are coming because of the way it's developing. The one thing that I can think of as an exception, but it's not a city trail, would be the Greenway, the Greenway Trail that's coming through. That's, I would consider that maybe being a key destination and there might be a couple of city streets that get crossed as part of that, as that gets developed, that could eventually get adopted into that route system.
Thank you.
Great, okay, thanks, Jack. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the pedestrian crosswalk policy dated December twenty twenty-four and crosswalk marking recommendations for intersections at Thirty Ninth Street North and Laverne Avenue North and at Thirty Ninth Street North and Wildflower Drive.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Holtz.
This really would be an example of feedback comes in from the community. That feedback drives action within staff, within council, and there is a result. Now, in this case, the feedback and action likely aligns with goals that the community was looking for. And that doesn't always happen. But I do want to thank members of the community that have been pushing on this. And I, in this case, I I fully agree and understand why. But at the same, on the other side of that coin, to me, this is also a value gained for the city. It is a good policy, staff worked on this, I appreciate the work that was done on this. I think there'll be a long-term value gained, especially as we're starting to look. And and we've had this conversation before when you were talking about what's going to be happening in the the eastern part of the Old Village. I, obviously, those are dotted lines and to be determined, but this really helps to drive home that we should be paying attention to the interconnectivity within the Old Village to help make sure that people have those opportunities if they choose to, to bike, to walk in ways that are, for lack of a better word, a best practice location. As you said, crosswalks are not a guaranteed safety path. So that is something to note. Just because there's a crosswalk there does not mean you are protected. I, that was news to me when we started to go through this, but I do appreciate the studies that do exist and knowing that. But I just want to say thank you to the community for helping to push on this.
Well, all right, would love to like to put a thanks out to SRF for doing this study for the city along with Jack on that and giving us some of their expertise in that area. With that, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. None, motion passes. Thank you. Item number twelve is Royal Golf Conditional Use Permits and Variants Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two six, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two seven, and Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two eight.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The applicant for tonight's application is Royal Golf LLC. The property is located at one one four four one twentieth street. The property is currently zoned golf course community with a shoreline overlay and APUD. The property is guided in the city's comp plan as golf course. The property is the former three M Tartan Park, which opened in nineteen sixty-three and was redeveloped in two thousand and seventeen to include the existing golf facilities and single-family residential homes. There are three requests before you tonight. The first is for a CUP for a clubhouse expansion as required in Resolution twenty seventeen ninety-two. The second is for a CUP for outdoor recreation facility for two pickleball courts. And the third is for a variance to increase the impervious surface within the GCC zoning district for this parcel. So then the slide has visuals of the proposal. The left is a schematic of the addition and pickleball courts. The addition is shown with the blue box. The pickleball courts is shown with the red box. And the right is an aerial image of the Royal Golf, Royal, Royal Golf Golf Course in relationship to the clubhouse parcel. So diving into the CUP request, the clubhouse CUP is to expand their existing clubhouse facility. The addition is going to house administration space, golf simulator and a restaurant expansion. Again, a CUP is required per the twenty seventeen PUD approval. The total impervious surface added with this request is just over two thousand square feet. The building addition itself is about fifty-four hundred square feet or fifty-five hundred square feet, taking into account that second floor. The outdoor recreation CUP again is for two pickleball courts for membership use. A CUP is required for an outdoor recreation use in the GCC zoning district. The proposal should not generate substantial traffic, although there are multiple access points for people to access the site via vehicle or other modes of transportation. Landscaping and fence netting is proposed to mitigate noise and there is no lighting proposed with this request. This CUP would add just under four thousand square feet of impervious surface. So breaking down the variance request, the golf course community zoning district requires thirty percent impervious surface. The existing parcel is a legal nonconformity at about forty-six percent. And the applicant is requesting about a ten percent increase to fifty-six point three one percent hardcover. The subject property is ten point nine acres and is surrounded by a previous golf course, which is roughly one hundred and eighty-two acres, according to the proposal narrative. When taken as a whole, the golf course's total impervious surface is far below the thirty percent threshold, but when you're taking it literally literally parcel by parcel, a variance is required. Uh, the function of the golf course requires considering the whole set of parcels. The golf course parcels cannot function as intended without the clubhouse parcel and vice versa. And then it is worth noting that the variance is required for the two CUPs to move forward tonight. The applicant has submitted a proof of parking plan, requesting a twenty percent reduction of stalls to account for users of the site who are also Royal Golf residents. This is a very busy table, just to state, um, the applicant does meet parking with the main lot only if the twenty percent reduction is granted. The applicant has indicated that there is room in the maintenance lot to accommodate parking, the full parking requirements if the twenty percent is not permitted. With approval of variance, both CUPs meet the city's twelve standard findings related to health, safety, welfare, zoning and comp plan consistency, compatibility with the neighborhood and essential character. The CUPs should not be hazardous or create a nuisance. They should not create any additional public cost. Uh, no additional traffic congestion and no impact to natural features of major importance. As you are aware, variances have four required findings. They must meet before they are reviewed for approval. The first of those is practical difficulties. Uh, a lot, the lot is an existing legal nonconformity in terms of impervious surface and its unique barbell shape, which is, which encloses the non-residential activities in the golf course community. The GCC code does not differentiate between residential and non-residential or commercial uses within the zoning district for impervious surface requirements, although both uses are required to create this community. The next one is unique circumstances. The property, the subject property is a location for parking for the surrounding amenities. And as such, it is necessary that the property must have an increased impervious surface. Uh, the function of the golf course requires the whole set of parcels. The third criteria is character locality. The subject property is surrounded by a previous golf course, which is subject, which the subject property provides parking and other facilities and amenities for. The overall impervious surface increase for the park holistically should not alter the essential character. And the final criteria is adjacent properties and traffic. The subject property is adequately buffered from residential areas through green space and landscaping. And as such, the property or the variance should not impair adjacent properties and increase congestion on a public street. So the application was sent out for agency review and we received the following comments. The Valley Ranch Watershed District indicated no permit is required. The fire department provided their standard comments regarding driveways, parking, fire suppression, and fire alarms. The city engineer provided a comment regarding water main easement. The applicant has since addressed this comment. And the landscape architect provided comments that the landscape plans can be accepted. And they also provided a comment in support of the variance, given the surrounding green space. The DNR did not provide a comment. Staff is recommending conditions of approval with each request. The first is for the clubhouse CUP. Staff is recommending five conditions. The first is a standard condition that all necessary permits must be obtained. The second is that the addition must have consistent design to the existing building. The third is the designated overflow for the ma- at the maintenance building if needed. The fourth is that any expansion would require a CUP amendment. And the fifth is that twelve month, twelve month expiration, which is a standard condition. The pickleball CUP, staff is proposing three conditions. Again, the first is that all necessary permits are obtained. The second is that any expansion, which would include adding lights, changing fencing, or adding courts, would require a CUP amendment. And the last one is the twelve month expiration. And then the variance has two conditions of approval, stating what the impervious surface variance is for, what percentage, and then again, that twelve month expiration. So a public hearing was sent to surrounding property owners on October twenty-eighth and published in the local paper on November first. City staff has not received any public comment at this time, and there was no comments at the public hearing. The planning commission reviewed the request at their November thirteenth meeting and recommended approval of the variance in both CUPs. The votes four to zero. And then I have three motions before you tonight. The first is that variance one, that one must go first since the CUPs are contingent on the variance. And I have the applicant here if you have any questions for them.
Questions for Ms. Jensen. Councilmember Holtz.
Do we know how high the fence is proposed for the pickleball?
I do not, but I believe the applicant could.
Just doing the launch angle from fourteen T.
The nearest home is over six hundred feet away.
It's only two hundred.
It's only two hundred. Yeah, last time I was there, two out of the four people in my group put their ball in that spot. So I was not one of them excited. I don't hook it, but I'm just.
I, I, I don't know that we can, we can, uh.
Well, I'm just curious from the ten, because there's two trees proposed. Uh, there, the two trees being proposed are Black Hill Spruce. Yeah, ten feet. Okay. Next for clarification.
Okay. Any other questions?
You said, sorry, you said the nearest house is six hundred feet from the pickleball courts?
Correct.
Okay. I guess I'm more just interested, um, because I know we've had it with some of the other pickleball courts, but maybe again for the applicant. But as far as for the noise mitigation, what is it that you guys plan to do? Is it some sort of tarping around the fence or? I guess what is the game plan for that?
We plan to put wind netting on the fence itself. That'll obviously aid with play, but it'll also aid with, you know, mitigating the noise. We'll also use natural buffers to try to mitigate the sound the best we can.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Dragasich.
Regarding the pickleball course, I did receive one call from a neighbor who was concerned about the noise for the pickleball course that they could hear from their houses on, in phase one.
Sure.
Um, I'm not an expert on pickleball courts and noise. I, I suggested that that person could contact other council people or appear tonight, but, um, it was a concern.
Okay.
Just an FYI.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there aren't any more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Here. I just want one more comment before.
If you had a question, you got a question. You can have discussion after motion.
Okay.
Alright.
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-two-six, approving a variance request from Royal Golf Club LLC for an impervious surface variance based on the findings of facts and conditions presented in the staff report.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. So discussion. Yes, Councilmember Dragasich.
I just wanted to compliment our staff and planning, um, for looking at this. I had several neighbors, because I live in that development, raised questions about the development. And I had a very good conversation and meeting with our planning staff. All of the questions were answered and are actually part of this presentation this evening. Um, but I was in more a difficult position because that's where I live.
Right.
And the questions were legitimate questions. Um, and they did a very good job of putting it together and the packet information tonight should answer everyone's concerns for questions I received.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Alright, I'll call a question. Oh, you have a discussion point?
I, well, for not.
Raise your finger.
Yeah, one.
Alright, go ahead.
I was just, it seems like it's probably gonna not be an issue anyway, but with impervious surface, I have no issue with it because as much as this is a single parcel, for all intents and purposes, we all consider this to be the entire entity. And impervious surface is not an issue overall within the entire royal development golf course.
Thank you. Alright, I'll call the question. All those in favor to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-two-six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Resolution passes. Anybody want to take on the second one?
I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-twenty-seven, approving a conditional use permit request from the Royal Golf Club LLC for an outdoor athletic facility for pickleball courts based on the finding of facts and conditions presented in the staff report.
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second. Given the, uh, minimal comments, unless somebody wants to jump in with something, I'll just call the question.
One thing, I, I blanking on the name of the park, but it's a park in Stillwater by, um, their fire station. More on the, the western side is Stillwater. Um, and at that park, they have pickleball courts and they have some sort of surround. Um, and whatever it is, it is very effective. We parked in that parking lot. I didn't even know pickleball was going on. Um, and again, it's six hundred feet away, so just something to think about as far as if you do have issues with the residents, that I, there are definitely options out there. Um, and whatever it was at that park in Stillwater worked very effectively.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting, uh, approving Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-two-seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, hearing everybody approving it, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-two-seven is approved.
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-two-eight, approving a conditional use permit request from Royal Golf LLC for the Royal Golf Club LLC for the expansion of the clubhouse facility based on the findings of fact and conditions pres- presented in the staff report.
Second.
Move a motion and a second, uh, for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-two-eight. Uh, expanding the clubhouse facility. Um, I'm gonna call, yeah, you have a comment. Go ahead.
As someone did email me pushing on this overall topic, just to clarify, there is no conflict of interest. I am not a member of this club, but someone did ask.
Fair enough. Um, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one-two-eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you very much. Item number thirteen, Limerick Village Concept Plan.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I will bring up the PowerPoint here. Alright, so, uh, this is returning, uh, to you for, um, the fourth time at about, at about that year, uh, point, we, we, about a year ago, reviewed this conceptual development for the first time. So we are, uh, again, referring to that Limerick, uh, village development that's proposed by Maplewood Development. Uh, as an overview for everyone on the location of this property, you can see that up on the screen, circled in red. Um, as a reminder, the site is just about eighty acres in size. We don't know if there are wetlands, um, on the site. And there is one existing, um, home on this property. The proposal that's, uh, been revised and resubmitted to the city for consideration is at, uh, six hundred and eighty-two residential units down from seven hundred and ten. As a refresher, uh, in terms of infrastructure, this, uh, development would need to be bringing infrastructure in and, and to, in order to serve this, not, site that's non-contiguous with the existing development. So jumping, uh, right to the revised plan, you can see it up on the screen. It was provided in your, uh, report. You'll see a number of, uh, or a couple of different changes, but some of the elements of this site, uh, do remain the same. And we'll talk through the different elements of this project, uh, as they've been revised. Uh, first and foremost, though, when we get a revised concept plan or a new one, we're looking for conformance with the city's future land use map and density requirements. Uh, so we've done that same, uh, thing here and confirmed again that this development as currently shown uh, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan in terms of the land use and the residential densities proposed here. So here is the density figure that was provided to the city as part of the submittal package. And so now we will, uh, kind of start to jump into the different elements of this site as, as they've been broken down for you in the staff report. First and foremost, on the northeast corner of the site, you'll, you'll notice that those attached townhomes are similar to how they've been um, laid out previously. Um, and as, uh, as, um, we talked about last time, these attached townhomes, they are rear-loaded, double-fronted. Um, they, they would still require a PUD simply because they would be platted on individual lots. Uh, some of the design considerations for this part of the development include the high visibility for Manning Avenue, um, open space and having that be part of the project, of course, and then, um, connectivity for the site, um, for pedestrians. On the southeast corner of the project is that four-story senior living. This has been largely the same through most of the concepts you've seen. Um, at this point, given the lot size and the number of units, there are, there isn't anticipated to be a need for PUD flexibility for this project. I would note to you that the parking requirements, uh, will depend on the unit mix. So we don't quite know that yet. We don't know, you know, one, two, three-bedroom apartments. We don't have that figured out yet. That would determine the parking. Some of the design considerations for this are the same as those attached townhomes. The high visibility in this location, particularly from Manning and, and, uh, that, that ninety-four corridor. So this is a very prominent site and would need those design, um, stick, you know.
Just point of privilege here, if we can hang on for a second. We gotta, we'll take care of that. 'Tis the season. Thank you for your patience. How about them Vikings? And I did not burn my pack of gum. I only have one. Matt, you cold down there? Who's wearing gloves? Alright, thank you for your patience. Uh, I think we got a recovery system, uh, in place. Alright, go ahead.
Alright, so we were just going through the different elements of the site plan that's been revised by Maplewood Development. Uh, we talked about the attached townhomes on the northeast corner and now shifting to the, the southeast corner with the four-story senior living and talking about uh, the fact that there were no identified flexibilities at this time. And, uh, in terms of design consideration, of course, this is a very prominent site, so the design should be, you know, compatible with the city's expectations for its, through its design standards. Moving, uh, to the west, those three-story apartments that were previously shown, uh, they are still shown on the concept plan here. Um, and as with the senior apartments, these, uh, given the, the area that these lots would be, or these apartment buildings would be on, there aren't any, uh, PUD flexibilities at this time identified that are necessary. Of course, again, parking does depend on the unit mix. As part of those, uh, three-story apartment buildings, there would be an associated, um, open space that, that helps them to achieve that, that density requirement that they have in terms of, um, area of lot per unit. Uh, the design considerations here, of course, to the south is business park area. So, uh, potentially considering some type of buffering there, uh, in addition to, uh, ensuring that these buildings are, uh, well-fronted on, on that um, east-west local road. Okay, now, moving to the single-family detached part of the development, these lots, uh, were formerly forty-five and forty feet wide. They have been revised to the city's minimum lot width of fifty, so they now conform with the zoning, the base zoning districts requirements for lot width. Um, given the, the area of these lots is, uh, appears to be proposed at six thousand, they would still need PUD flexibility, but for a thousand feet from, uh, seven, uh, requirement of seven thousand, um, as they're proposing six thousand feet lot area, but I would, uh, say that it seems that these lots can still accomplish the city's, uh, setbacks and other requirements that, uh, you would have for a standard lot width. Some of the design considerations here are the same as you would have for any other single-family development. Making sure we're, you know, consist, uh, considering sidewalk locations, trails, landscaping, et cetera. And lastly, uh, this is a newer element of the site. Uh, these are the front-loaded townhomes, I'll call them, uh, because the townhomes are really, uh, fronting on the street as opposed to the other part of this development where they're double-fronted or, um, the, the kind of, the front of the building and the other part of this development sort of opens up onto a trail. In this case, they front on the street. Uh, that is, uh, not consistent with the city's design standard for attached townhomes. There are, there are, it is a requirement, I should say, uh, that doesn't allow for parking in front of these buildings. So that is a request for flexibility. And I can let the developer speak to the nature of their request and the rationale for it. Some of the design considerations for these units are primarily the prominence from that central park area. Some of the design considerations for these units are primarily the prominence from that central park area. And I'm gonna go back to the, one of the, the highlights of the, the site plan here that's been revised is you'll notice the public park has been significantly increased in its size. It went from under two acres to now at about eight acres. So there is a significant addition to the area of open space north of that Stormwater Pond that was formerly a single-family lots. So that's one of the biggest changes you'll notice to this concept plan. Alright, at our last meeting, we did talk about access and there were a couple access points that had been points of conversation, I would say that the developer has revised their site plan to accommodate the access comments that were discussed at the last meeting, so all of those blue circle areas now have an access where we were indicating one would be required. So I've just summarized on this slide the flexibilities that are requested, so as a reminder, the townhome units, both rear-loaded and front-loaded, given that they would be plotted on individual lots, that would be a PUD flexibility. The front-loaded townhome to have parking in the, in the front yard area. And then lastly, those fifty-foot standard width lots would still require a deviation to the minimum lot area. So those are the things that we're aware of at this time, of course, as you move forward, things could be identified. So in terms of review comments, we've had review memos from city staff for this project that are still very much valid, so a number of those comments are obviously things that we can carry forward into the next part of the, the review process. Importantly, phasing, we always have to have two points of access for any project with over thirty units, so that is one thing that we would track through that, through future reviews. So this development recently went back to the Parks Commission for a reevaluation as it's been revised, so in February of twenty twenty four, the Parks Commission was a little bit mixed on the development, given the area of the park. And in November of this year, recently, the, the Parks Commission was in favor of the development as revised because of that increased park area. So here again is the site plan, and we can come back to this if you would like during your discussion. I've got a couple discussion questions here, so this, I would note, this item is advisory only, there is no decision to be made at this time, so it's really a good opportunity to provide feedback to the developer. Couple questions on the slide here will, will help accomplish that. I can stand for your questions now, I do know the developer is here and eager to share with you some of the information about their revised plan and also they did get asked a question about frontage and how it would appear from Manning Avenue, and so they've provided some renderings that they can speak to as well for how these units will look, so with that, you can let me know if you have any questions.
Councilmember Holtz. Thank you for that, you had mentioned that wetlands are not known yet at this time.
Yeah, so I, I would say that I don't know that I've seen a wetland delineation on the site, so I'll have to defer to the developer's engineer as to whether a wetland delineation has been done to identify where those may or may not be.
Because I would presume if there were, that would drastically change the entire thing.
Correct, that, that is correct, so if there were obvious wetlands on the property, that would, that would impact the development's design, it's a farm field right now, so I'm not really sure how many wetlands there are.
Follow-up question then, is it, is it reasonable to presume then, because the medium density, the homes got changed then up to a fifty-foot lot line to get up to conformance standards? Is there a relationship between that and then having the townhomes be rear-loaded? In terms of like, there's a certain amount of space, because right now, the medium density overall is at one twenty-six, that is the the bottom of the range, actually, which is something we don't usually see. So is there a relationship in that because those lots expanded, there's then less space for what's proposed then along? Is that a lilac ab for the townhomes?
So I can, I think, speak a little bit to that and maybe if you've got more questions, we can, we can get into it a little further, but here's the density figure that was provided by the developer. We've been requiring this throughout the process to understand the conformance with the comp plan. The green area on the map is your high-density residential, future land use category. And so it, this development has remained within the allowable density range in the green or the high-density residential, that's eight to fifteen units per acre. So in, in the pink, we're, that's the medium-density residential, future land use category. This is very much at the lower end of the four to eight unit range. So the developer is, is attempting or is successfully at this point avoiding a comp plan amendment, they're, they're meeting the the ranges in the comp plan, although it is noted, as you point out, that the, the pink area is on the lighter side of, of the four to eight units. I, I would also just add, we brought this back to, to Met Council staff to ensure that no complant amendments would be required, and so we feel really confident that's the case. Lastly, public park lands are actually able to be netted out of the calculation, so some of the things that you see shifted around, you know, they're, they're being accounted for in terms of ensuring conformance.
In terms of phasing, has that even been discussed yet as to what that hypothetically would look like, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase twelve?
You know, I think it's a little early, I think that answer might depend on the infrastructure that needs to come in and how it makes sense to build that out, but I would have to, you know, kind of defer to the developer on where their thoughts are with phasing.
And I presume it's still ear, too early, obviously the southern side is zoned for, for business, but none of these sketches at this point show the actual distance then, and in terms of, are we looking at burms, what type of privacy? Like, we're not at that stage yet for a landscaping plan.
Yeah, so a landscaping plan would come later in the process, certainly, and it, it is, there is screening required by the city's landscaping code, as you know. And typically, the more intense use is the one that is obligated to provide the screening, so it may be the case that this development doesn't necessarily have to provide the screening, but of course, through the PUD review and through future reviews, I think some thought towards how these, this use interacts with the business park would be wise.
Thank you.
Can you go back to the map that showed some of the trails internally there? There, is there any thought about having, or is Fifth Street, as it carries through, are we, are there gonna be sidewalk or a trail along Fifth Street?
Yeah, there will be a trail required along that fifth, that new Fifth Street on the south side of Fifth Street.
Correct, okay. So the ones that they have laid out are just internal to their development?
Yeah, it looks to me, on this kind of conceptual figure, that what you're seeing mostly is those sidewalks, trails, but I know the developer and their engineer here, they can also speak to that.
Sure. Any other questions for Mr. First? Otherwise, we can hear from Mr. Wicklund or Mr. Collier or Ali.
Got it, okay. I'm gonna keep my coat on here.
That's probably a good idea.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, my name is Clark Wicklund, civil engineer with Laian Engineering, been before you before. As Nathan had mentioned, we read staff's report and appreciate what's been identified. We would agree with staff, it's generally consistent with, I believe, the direction given up until this time from council and staff. As Nathan had mentioned, they did ask that we provide a few examples or images of the product that would front Manning Avenue. So we just, we provided three examples of a senior projects in the metro. There are actual photos of sites we consider similar to this, they're on arterial roadways with trails, setback similar to what we anticipate the senior building being set back and the townhomes being set back. So I'm just gonna go through these very quickly, these are just images, these are nothing specific to this project. This is a, and this is a rear-loaded, front-facing, kind of eyes-on-the-street product that we did down in the city of Eagan next to Twin Cities Premium Outlet. This was done by Ryland at the time, again, this is one image of the same footprints that we are using adjacent to Manning Avenue, and there's lots of different skins you can put on these buildings. This is another product, city of Maple Grove. Again, it's on a trail, you can see a trail out in front with the sidewalks extended from the entries out to the trail. A setback a similar distance of what we would anticipate on Manning Avenue. You'll note there's plenty of room for landscaping, if the architecture's done well, I think it should add for a really nice street front as a gateway into Lake Elmo at that location. Again, same footprint, forward, you know, forward-facing, rear-loaded. We had one other, anyhow, here's a, a senior facility, I believe this one is Arbor Lake Senior Living in Maple Grove. Setback a similar distance from an arterial roadway, they have a trail in front of it. Similar spacing for landscaping as what we would anticipate. Again, the architecture here is probably less important, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to review that when an actual application comes forward specific to a user of that piece of the project. This is another senior facility, setback similarly, trail in front of it from an arterial roadway. Again, these are some of the images, some of what you can anticipate at that location. This is Walker Methodist down in the city of Lakeville, east of their city hall. Another townhome product, actually, this is a fairly high-end product. This is part of the Highland Bridge product, Highland Bridge product, project done in Highland, the old Ford plant. This is definitely a brownstone-type product, again, same footprint as what we're using. So if there's anything you should come away with, it's, there's all sorts of elevations that can be created for the footprints that we're proposing. And then lastly, another senior facility in the city of Excelsior, this is the Waters, this is the four-story product just west of downtown Excelsior on the north side of Highway Seven. Again, there's, we could, I could share unlimited images of senior projects and townhome projects, but we were asked to provide some examples. These are some of what you can anticipate in the future when specific applications come forward. Regards to staff's report, a couple of things, and then Councilmember Holtz, you had a question on wetlands, our wetland person who's registered with the state, she previously walked the site prior to Mr. Cucurella acquiring the property. And she determined that there was no wetlands present, she issued a statement in regards to her observation. She certainly will be subject to do that again as part of a formal process with the city and with the watershed. But she, she did do a review of it, onsite review. Regards to single-family lots, I should note, while the minimum single-family lots, the fifty-five-foot width, the minimum square footage would be sixty-one hundred square feet, I would say on average, all of these lots, if you consider them in whole, is gonna average over seven thousand square feet as an average. You've got pie-shaped lots, you've got cul-de-sac lots, you have a number of them considerably larger. I would propose that as part of an application, we do a calculation of the average, provide that for review and consideration by the council. In regards to, and one last item, there was reference to the townhomes. And I'm not sure, Nathan, can I get there, just keep rolling back? So we have two townhome product down there, we have a rear-loaded, front-facing product, which was some of the product, the elevation that I shared with you. They're generally a three-story product, a more urban product. We have those currently proposed adjacent to Manning Avenue. The townhome product to the west, adjacent to the single-family homes is more of a patio-style product. It's our opinion that those are a better transitionary product in proximity to single-family homes, it's more of a suburban solution. I would also add that each of these products, whether it be the product on Manning Avenue or the product west of the park, each of them have sixteen-foot-wide driveways and sixteen-foot-wide garage doors. There's vehicles parked on either product. And if you need an example of that, Bentley Village, we did in two thousand nineteen. It's south of Boulder Pond, about two miles west of this site, right on Fifth Street. And we have two hundred and forty patio-style townhomes with driveways and garage doors. So the project we took through process, process here, if you need an example of that, we would ask that that be given consideration as part of a PUD, we do feel it's a better transitionary product, and two, we wouldn't want to have more urban product, the more vertical stacked stuff on Manning kind of detached off in its own little neighborhood. So we would ask for council's consideration of that, I have nothing more unless you have any questions of me.
Any questions for Clark? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess what I've seen is some, some changes that were made to the plan, I'll, I'll applaud the developer and engineer on making some of those changes along with the park and, and some of the access that I think some of the council members had brought up last time. You know, increasing the lot front and maybe changing some of that. I didn't really see anything in this that really struck me as something that I would necessarily have, have a problem with at this point, but I know that it's we get a lot of comments about the, the, the type of housing and things that go on in Lake Elmo, but in our comp plan, this is labeled as high-density and medium-density, and this seems to meet that, and, and so paying attention to those comments that were made previously is much appreciated, and that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add to it, so I'm with the points up here. With the first one, I find acceptable for that proposed fifty-foot lots to be under the lot area requirement, I don't know if I love the idea of doing an average for it, I think it's just more of a, in this situation, that's what's needed, the variance is required just based off of the size of the lot and to meet the minimum requirement in this case, actually. So I, I guess, from, from my standpoint, I don't need, know if I need to see it as a, an average. I think just in this situation, that is what's gonna have to be done to make it work to meet the minimum amount. I think, again, the explanation for the transition into more of the urban for the rear, or for having front-loaded versus rear-loaded for the townhomes, I think that makes sense, and again, just with the design, I have no issue with that. I, obviously, I love seeing that there is park area increase, I know that changes the calculation a little bit, but I think it's a good trade-off. And then I guess for the last one, I, I just didn't really have any concerns for that based off of previous discussions, but hopefully that helps, I know, you know, I had some concerns with the density in, in some of the previous presentations, so with how it's shown tonight, I definitely feel good about that.
Councilmember Holtz. With Third Street then to the south, was that proposed to have trail connections?
Talking about the east-west road. There, there would be sidewalk and trail connections throughout the development, so this would be connected, if not through trail, definitely by sidewalks.
Then that answers that question, because I was thinking then, if you're coming from the west, you might go to the northern side of the park, or you might go to the southern side of the park, and obviously, Third Street you would take to the southern side of the park, and you would take Fifth if you can go to the north side. And that's obviously far to be determined as to if this were to pass down the road, what type of amenities and down, down the road, but as to the questions, I would agree with Councilmember Hearn on, on the first one, I I don't see a need for an average, but if you want to go back to the other questions. It does make sense that you would have a different product in that transition area. I mean, our, our comp plan itself is all about transitions, that's why we go from high to medium to low to rural, and we have those transitions, so is, it's, to me, it's no different than added, within development, you would have that type of transition. I think along those same lines, it would then be logical that the design features for the ones along Manning would logically also maybe have a different what'd you call them, you didn't call it a shell, you called it a skin, it's like putting a skin on a car. That, that, to me, would be a part of that, so I, I don't have an issue with the rear-loaded. With the trails and the parks, I watched both of those parks, parks commissions when there's three, two, and then the more recent one. And I, I would agree with him in this case, having it up to eight definitely changes things, I had I had tremendous concerns, uh, prior to this before it was eight. I appreciate that there, not only is the eight acres for a public park, but there also are two private parks in different locations here. I, I think that definitely is beneficial for this proposal. Um, in terms of streets, you answered my question with, with Third Street. I guess moving forward, I, um, I know we, we've had many discussions about, uh, what is the proper style? And I've got on the record that I don't think there is or is not for, say, the apartment that we approved along ninety-four. And to me, that, you know, is along ninety-four, is along interstate corridor. In this case, I, I do have a, an asterisk to that in that you are now entering the community. You are now driving in, this is now someplace where you do have more visibility. And, um, I think it would, might be worthwhile to have additional discussions about the proposed, uh, um, offerings, because as was mentioned, there might be a hundred different options. And we might have a hundred different opinions, and we might not actually have an agreement. But I, I think it'd be appreciative to then kind of get down to that level. What exactly are we looking for? Or, or are we just saying, you know what, here's two or three high-level things? We like brick, we like multiple elevations, we like things that jut out, and have it at that. I, but I do think that'd be a worthwhile future discussion for the council to have. Similar to what we did, um, when we did the Old Village Moratorium, we, we surveyed the community, we got feedback about styles. You know, we had that conversation, we had examples, and there's preferences that are provided by the community for the Old Village. And I, I think in this case, I would want council to have a similar, um, take as to... There are definitely ones that are up there that I like, there are ones up there that I think not. But I'm sure we all might have just different views on that too, so I'll, I will leave it at that for now.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Just a one last, um, the next steps for this project, it'll likely come before the city council in the form of an EAW at the next step in the process, so that's what you expect next.
Sounds good.
And so to confirm, nothing on this involves a comp plan request at this time?
We double, triple-checked the, the density, particularly with the Met Council, and I feel pretty confident at this point that we're going to avoid it.
Thank you.
Next, everybody's favorite subject, cannabis ordinance, ordinance twenty-two-four dash twenty. Is that four-twenty subliminal? Ordinance twenty-two-four twenty-one and twenty-two-four one-thirty. Come on, nice. Come on, that was right there.
All right, Mayor and Council, that was definitely not on purpose. Uh, good evening. Uh, cannabis regulations, so we're looking at, uh, this evening, the land use standards that the council has been discussing as with many, many communities across the state, in addition to registration. So, um, this comes after multiple discussions at the city. First with a joint workshop between the city council and, uh, Planning Commission on November twelfth, followed by the Planning Commission Public Hearing on the proposed ordinance amendments on the November twenty-fifth. So here we are tonight, reviewing, uh, those draft ordinances, potentially for approval. Just as a reminder to the city council, there are a number of different businesses, cannabis businesses, that are, uh, now going to be allowed to get licenses in the state. That list is in front of you on this slide that kind of summarizes those, those different types of businesses, along with the different types of uses that come with them. Microbusiness and meso-businesses are, are those two kind of newer ideas that we discussed. The others are a little bit more self-explanatory. So jumping right in, uh, what did staff have initially written? Uh, first and foremost, we wanted to define cannabis and hemp businesses and their operations. Uh, we also wanted to determine where these uses can or, or, uh, would be allowed in the city, and then how. So whether it's permitted as a by-right quote-unquote use or as a conditional use. Lastly, we needed to, or felt the need to propose performance standards that would cover things like buffers from different uses, odor mitigation, noise, et cetera. So at the eleven-twelve workshop, uh, the, the feedback is generally summarized on this slide, although you can remember that conversation. One of the top things was that the city should take the lead on registration of these businesses, these, particularly the retail businesses that the cities are allowed to register, uh, and to limit to two cannabis retail sales locations for now with the ordinance. Primarily, there was a focus on sales, uh, on commercial sites, and then with the little, the more intensive production processing type uses concentrated in really the business park industrial area. Lastly, uh, the general approach was accepted that the city should lean towards higher standards now, with the intent to potentially revise or provide flexibility later on as we learn more about this whole industry and the requirements from the state. So then, uh, the Planning Commission reviewed the draft ordinances. Uh, their feedback was pretty similar, uh, really that focus on where the uses should take place, uh, making sure that sales are in commercial areas, production again in those more industrial areas. They were really, uh, seemed to be in favor of utilizing those most restrictive performance standards for now, getting lighter later on, and then really wanted to ensure that through, uh, this ordinance amendment, temporary cannabis events would be indoors only. So, uh, what does the draft zoning ordinance do now, or what, how, how have we revised it? Uh, we've revised it to allow low potency hemp edible retailers as a permitted use. So it's by right, but only if they are an accessory to a permitted principal use. And that was after a discussion on, um, in the village mixed-use area. You know, we might have businesses that are already in operation selling these types of things. They would have to go back through the licensing process once the licensing kicks off in the new year. Uh, if the state comes and asks the city if they're allowed to operate, we would have to tell them no unless this was permitted in, in that district. So that was a change. Um, we've limited the temporary cannabis events to being indoors and restricted cannabis businesses, particularly the, the, the sales and processing from non-sewered districts, so basically the developing areas of the city. So just as a reminder, uh, these are the different performance standards that cannabis businesses would be subject to, but thinking about things like security, odor mitigation, restricting outdoor uses, including storage, lighting, meeting the city's lighting requirements, signage, and then lastly, those temporary cannabis events. So I can run through the proposed use table revisions here really quickly. We're proposing that the, as mentioned, the village mixed-use area is allowed to have a necessary use as lower potency hemp edible sales. The use table on the screen here talks about mixed-use commercial and business park areas, uh, primarily concentrating, again, those sales and, uh, commercial areas. And the same is said here on this land use table, which also does allow for those more intense uses in the business park. That's kind of all summarized on the screen here now, with the areas that are circled in red being those areas that a cannabis business of a certain type, depending on their particular use, where those cannabis using, businesses could be established in the city. Um, as mentioned, staff were asked to draft a registration ordinance, so we do have one in front of you this evening. I would note to you that the registration ordinance includes registration for retail operations that include, uh, the cannabis retailers as we discussed, but also includes the low potency hemp edible retailers. Uh, through more conversations with the legal team, uh, we've identified that if the city doesn't, um, defer that to the county, that it will have to take that registration on. Uh, and so in terms of registration, uh, in, in addition to that clarification, the number of locations we've clarified, um, can actually be limited to zero if there are enough in Washington County. So that wasn't something we had discussed previously, but that is in fact the case. Uh, fees have been capped or, uh, are maxed out to where they can be per the statute. Uh, and we would have a number of other, uh, more standard-type, um, process improvements here. So in short, what does it look like to get registered as a business? Uh, you would, as an applicant, you would submit your application on a standard city form with your fee. Administrative staff at the city would review for completeness. Uh, we would do a zoning verification check, make sure you've got your approvals in place, and then off you are with your, um, registration. Public hearing was held on these ordinance amendments at the city, um, Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-fifth. We did have one, a member of the community, provide some public comments, genuinely supporting the performance standards and land use, um, restrictions that are proposed. Couple other questions that have been asked through the process, I wanted to provide on the slide here. Can cities limit businesses if there are enough in the county? We tur- determined the answer to that was yes. Uh, are liquor stores allowed to sell cannabis products? Uh, no, they are not allowed to sell, um, cannabis retail, but they may sell low potency hemp edible products. Um, can buffers be increased beyond the state statutory limits? No, but there are other performance standards that we can apply to these businesses as we've discussed. And lastly, uh, we did have a question about industrial hemp and growing cannabis outdoors. Um, so, uh, the state statute does consider industrial hemp as an agricultural product. And so being that's the case, currently, our interpretation is you could grow, um, industrial hemp as a product in the city if you were in an agricultural zone. So it's an agricultural product, uh, that wouldn't be distinguished from others like corn or soybeans. That did lead to a conversation about outdoor cultivation in the city. And so I do have an ordinance that was, um, printed out here, it's more of a recent revision. The blue text are the additions to that ordinance. Effectively, the, the slide here summarizes what they would do. So number one, we would define, um, commercial outdoor and indoor cannabis cultivation, if we wanted to allow outdoor cultivation. We would, um, likely want to permit this outdoor cultivation use only in rural residential and agricultural zones through a conditional use permit that would allow the city for an opportunity to review a proposal to establish that business. The city would want to, uh, stop or, uh, kind of adopt some minimum qualifying criteria. So thinking about those, those would be things like making sure we've got a minimum lot area of ten acres, um, having a buffer from any planting area to a residential or a lot line. And lastly, um, having, you know, buffering from the public right-of-way, so these uses aren't readily visible. And, and then also, we would have to consider exempting from certain performance standards that are really only applicable to indoor uses. So that is what's in the ordinance in front of you, uh, and that would be a, kind of, at this point, uh, a policy decision for the city council to make. I would note to you that, um, adopting an ordinance this evening doesn't preclude you from coming back later as we learn more in making adjustments to your ordinances. So I do think that it would be beneficial for the city to have something on the books come the new year. Uh, certainly, the city can continue to revise these standards, and maybe that would be the expectation as things continue to evolve. So with that, I do have some example motions for you on, uh, the slide here, and can take any questions you've got.
Question, s- so do we have to allow outdoor cannabis cultivation? That stuff stinks.
It, it seems to be, uh, something that communities have handled different ways. Some communities, it seems to me that, uh, they've interpreted the state statute as though cities have to allow cannabis cultivation outdoors, uh, and some haven't. And so I, I guess I would, you know, look to Sarah if she's got any other opinions on...
Do you have an interpretation on that, Sarah?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe it is something that cities do need to allow, although they can put certain performance standards on it.
I just don't know how you'd take care of the, uh, odor ordinance, to be quite frank.
I, I don't know that it's something that you can necessarily entirely mitigate, um, to, to address the question.
Make them like...
Some cities have done some odor mitigation requirements in their, in their codes. I don't know if we have any examples here, but...
Hmm.
So with outdoor, Mayor members of the council, with outdoor cultivation, you would consider things like the minimum lot area to ensure that you've got a large property that is able to establish their use. Another thing is buffering. You could consider increasing both the lot minimum and also the buffering distance from plants to a residential structure. You could increase that two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred feet. That would be something the city could do.
Okay. Councilmember Holtz?
Thank you for all that and for answering, uh, additional questions as we've gotten here. On that same vein, would a performance standard, not only, because you had mentioned, uh, you know, distance from, from right-of-way, are we talking literally, you know, ten acres? And maybe a pers- only a percent within there can be used for cultivation? Do the performance standards and statute allow for that level of restriction?
Well, the cultivator's license allows up to four acres of production, max.
So...
They're going to be capped.
So if they had a ten-acre lot, at most, forty percent for cultivation, likely less because of drainage, and they probably have a home there and other stuff?
Yep.
Was there any specific reason for ten acres in the first place? I mean, is that a state statute that...
It was something that staff came up with based on just kind of thinking about the, the, the use proposed and what they would need in terms of, you know, with, like, the buffers, for example, making sure that we're able to buffer. Um, there'd typically be associated buildings as well, so having those within the site. So I don't think you want to get a little bit less than ten acres, certainly, you could...
And you said four acres was the maximum that they could do on a single lot?
Yep, so the cultivator license allows up to two acres of outdoor cultivation, but you could actually get up to four with the Office of Cannabis Management, um, basically signing off on it.
Okay.
So in here, we have at least two hundred feet from property lines. What is it like, two hundred feet from nearest building or residence or...
So if you had two hundred feet from a, just as an example, Mr. Mayor, um, if you had a home that was set back fifty feet from their property boundary?
Yeah.
You would have, in effect, a hundred and fifty feet from the property boundary of, well, call it the farm.
Okay.
And so if we have two hundred feet minimum, we're at least ensuring that we've got enough. There may be cases where there's considerably more.
Understood. Thank you. Don't want to make it any more complicated than we need to.
So I just have a couple of questions, and I apologize if these were answered, I, I was sick for the workshop. But a temporary cannabis event, I guess, can you help me understand what that, is that like, when we have puff-and-puff days where they have to get a liquor license for people to be consuming liquor on sight of an event? Is that what a cannabis event is?
I think there's like a little bit of, um, different maybe ideas of what it could be, but what we know that a, a license holder for a temporary cannabis event can do is have an event for up to four days. Uh, and through the city's ordinance, we're attempting to limit those temporary cannabis events to properties that already have an approved, um, cannabis business, and then keeping them indoors, uh, controlling the hours of the event itself. So trying to put some controls into what that...
But again, we're not really sure what a cannabis event is.
So it allows onsite consumption. So I used an analogy of, um, like, in the beer, in the beer industry, they've got a industry event called the Beer Dabbler, where they have a bunch of different companies come in and sample those products. This could maybe be a similar idea to that, although there could be other types of cannabis events that might be a, a possibility.
And the hours restricted on that were ten to five, if I saw correctly, right?
Yeah. And that was one where the state statute requires that we allow it? We can just, yeah, set restrictions to be as free as we want with that, or as tight as we want with that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the state statute does require that you allow temporary cannabis events, um, but you can place time, place, manner of restrictions on those.
Four-day per year, that's a requirement, though?
I think so.
Yep. So the city cannot prohibit a licensed business from taking operation?
And then just one more question with the odor control. So in the presentation, I, I, I kind of like it, because in the presentation or in the packet, in the packet, you had mentioned if we want to talk about having a qualified industrial, um, hygienist...
Sure.
Do an odor control study and then have to check in on it annually? Versus, I think what was shown more in the presentation tonight was more just if there is any odor that's detected by residents, that, that's not acceptable?
Yep, so, uh, Mayor members, members of the council, the draft zoning ordinance, and that's twenty-two-four dash twenty, that's for the land use controls, does include a requirement for, um, all cannabis businesses except for, in this case, you know, outdoor cultivation. All cannabis businesses would have to be in a facility that controls odor such that they cannot be detected at the abutting property boundary. There is also an opportunity through approval of those businesses to require information to basically certify that the odor can be controlled. You know, maybe it's the HVAC system that we need some, someone to speak to, or whatever the ventilation system is, and that's where the industrial hygienist would come in.
And I guess just think, because, well, I guess it's more of a discussion, but, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holtz?
And to confirm, so this... And to confirm, so this version, which would change with outdoor, this would replace twenty twenty-four dash two one?
Two zero, the, the land use. No, I apologize. You're right. Twenty twenty-one, that would be the performance standards and land use.
All right, so non-issue for the first motion.
Correct. Yeah, the registration ordinance would, would stay the same.
More questions for Mr. First? We do have somebody in the public that wanted to speak on this. And he gave us a handout, though. Handout that way. There's even one for Sarah there. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have six minutes for comment. There are no, there's no question answer from the council, but staff will be asked to get back with you on the questions that you made direct towards us. So, Bern Fleming?
Hi, I'm Bern Fleming from the Homeowners Association in Torrey Pines. And I had a couple of notes I wanted to make, one on cannabis. It's not in the nature of a question, though. It sounds like it. What I really would like to say is, would you please consider publishing what you decide perhaps this evening regarding cannabis? I think it is a big issue, and I think there should be a lot more curiosity than I've seen so far, so far from residents, but things such as placing them in commercial zones, setbacks from schools and parks, lighting, signage, general appearance. There's a couple of stores, I guess they sell these products, on fifty-two between here and Rochester. I don't want something that looks like either of those two businesses in Lake Elmo. I, I know there's no choice. I think a note in the weekly newspaper would be a good idea, fresh, and just summarizing some of these things so that people are aware that you're, you're on top of this, and I kind of feel you are. I think this presentation was excellent. I think the hearing was very well done, too, even though the attendance was rather light. I think I was the only attendees. But I, let's stay ahead of this and maybe put something in fresh. You know, outline that you're on top of it. This is what you're going to watch. And that's all I had on cannabis. I, I probably can't make my next comment, can I?
If it's related to cannabis.
It is not related to.
Oh, then it's not related to.
I shall be quiet.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Although I would say, Mr. Fleming, if you do have questions, feel free to email the administrator, and she can direct them to the appropriate person to get back to you.
Sure.
All right, I mean.
Again, I have a question. More of a plea. Put something in, in fresh.
All right, thank you very much.
Good publication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Move to adopt ordinance, was that a public session?
That was the end of.
It was not a public hearing.
No public hearing.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty establishing the registration requirements for cannabis retail businesses.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance two zero four twenty. Discussion. Councilmember Holt.
In terms of the registration requirements, this might be in the next one as it's more of a performance standard. But a question was raised from the public about distances to schools and other things. Can you address that? Because I recall from the, our work session, there are distances, but we cannot, we cannot be more restrictive than what.
Yep, ma- mayor and council, so the state statute does allow for cities to establish buffers from certain uses from which you could, you know, in which you cannot have a cannabis business. And so one is for schools. The buffer that is allowed by state statute for those is one thousand feet. The other three are daycare facilities, attractions in parks. So it's not the park boundary, but actually the ball field or the playground within it. And then lastly, residential treatment facilities. So those three types of uses have a buffer of a five hundred feet, and you cannot get greater than that. We're creating a cross-reference in the registration ordinance to make sure that there's compliances on it.
To make sure those are in there. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four twenty, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash XX.
They say two one is revised, I thought.
Twenty one. Revised twenty one, as was handed out, establishing land use and performance standards for cannabis and hemp businesses.
There a second?
Support.
Okay, any questions related to this? Councilmember Holt.
I, so this, this is a change from what was in there, but my, my concern was twofold, and this is why I'm supporting the motion. One was the aspect of, I don't think we legally can prohibit outdoor cultivation, which appears, this is what our, our legal is informing us of as well. And number two, I, I just don't feel it's right to prohibit one type of a product on, on farm fields when we don't prohibit others. Sense from farm fields occur in, for other reasons as well. But I do, I do appreciate the input from staff as to what are things that we can help to mitigate that are within our legal control. Whether ten acres is, is right or wrong, I will, I think that could be open for discussion. But the fact that a four acre max is in there, I think definitely helps. The two hundred foot from property lines, I think, will be probably the greatest benefit of all. But yeah, I, I just, I don't feel that it is our place to prohibit, especially if there's a legal issue.
So I, two, or I guess a comment here first. So I, I, again, I, I like the idea of having more of the, if the odor can be detected by a neighbor, I see some concern there with possibly if the neighbor just doesn't like the idea of having that as a business next to them, that they can just subjectively say that they smell something. So I think at some point, you know, maybe there does have to be something in there as far as then what happens at that point. Contesting prove that, hey, this is actually at a legal limit, or I, I don't know what the correct term is for that, but at a limit where like this is appropriate. I guess what, my feeling with the outdoor cannabis cultivation is I would prefer to err on the side of being more restrictive and being less appealing for somebody that wants to do that currently, but then looking to reduce the requirements and make it more available possibly down the road if it, if it seems like that is something that does make sense for the city. So I guess I would like to actually make an amendment to the motion to increase the min- to increase the minimum to twenty acres for the sites.
Second.
Discussion on the recommended amendment.
I, I support that. I, I, we don't know the right answer, right? Like, this is the first from Minnesota. This is, other cities, as you mentioned, are, are developing this at the same time. So I, twenty might be the best one, and I, I think feedback was good, and I support it.
So on twenty acres, it'd still be a max of four cultivated, right?
So just it's gonna leave, suppose the buffer, and maybe we do need to change the buffer then with it as well. Because the point would be have a bigger area so they could fit it in without having to get two hundred feet from the buffer. Should include that with it.
But the argument against that, Councilmember Hearn, is that not every parcel is equally.
Correct.
It's not, there are not all square.
Yeah.
Call the question on the amendment to the motion. All those in favor of increasing to a twenty acre, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Hearing none. The amendment is added. Then call the question on the adoption of ordinance, the amended ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. All those in favor to adopt the amended ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted. Entertain a motion on the last resolution for summary publication.
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three zero authorizing summary publication of ordinances twenty twenty-four dash twenty and twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion in this section, second, for authorizing summary publication. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution twenty twenty-four for authorizing summary, summary publication of ordinances twenty twenty-four dash twenty and twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one are approved. Thank you. Next, we have zoning text amendments. Landscape standards, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one nine, resolution twenty twenty-four dash one two nine.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sarah Evenson. I'm a landscape architect with HKGI and have been serving as the City of Lake Elmo's landscape architect for the last two years. And over the course of two years of practicing and helping to enforce the landscape and tree preservation ordinance, we've learned a lot about how to enforce it, and we think we have some ideas about how we can make it better. And so we come before you tonight with some proposed ordinance amendments. First is to the tree preservation ordinance, and the next is to the landscaping ordinance. So the, the purpose of the tree preservation ordinance, as it's written, is to preserve and protect, to the extent practical, the maximum number of significant and specimen trees within the community. Being that Lake Elmo is a rapidly growing community and, you know, was established on a landscape that has a lot of really beautiful trees. Trying to preserve what's there while moving forward with development is part of the intent of this. And when we're looking at the tree preservation ordinance, we want to make sure that, you know, even though we're reviewing people's plans and they have protection for trees put in place as part of those plans, in some cases, we're not seeing that tree protection, or we're hearing concerns from residents that that tree protection has not been adequately put in place throughout construction. So one of the things that we're looking at is actually doing an initial compliance review of that tree protection to make sure that they're actually putting it in place per plan. We want to make sure that we're protecting these trees that, you know, can't just be replaced really quickly. And one of the other things that we're proposing is to integrate MINDOT standards, which are industry standards that are widely recognized among members of the construction and development community. They're really easy to understand. They're well vetted and researched. And by folding those in, it just helps to bring some consistency to the plans that we're approving. Substantive changes, in addition, we want to make sure that we're clarifying again that tree preservation is a requirement. And that's mainly to ensure that we're not getting developers coming in and proposing masquerading of sites when there are, in fact, opportunities for them to both meet the intent of the code and still preserve trees. We want to make sure that they're putting forward that best effort. And like I said, introducing MINDOT tree protection and tree preservation standards because those are widely recognized by the industry. Another thing that we're looking at is requiring that sites meet inspections or have an approved inspection before the surety can be released. So we want to make sure that we're confirming that they're, again, doing what they said they would do in the plans. And then lastly, for tree preservation, I'm just clarifying that the inspections be done by a landscape architect licensed by the state of Minnesota, which aligns with the state board language. Any questions on tree preservation specifically before we move on?
Councilmember Holt. On the language, when it's talking about licensed by the state of Minnesota, because it comes up in multiple times for the tree preservation plan, the woodland evaluation report, and et cetera. All, for the later ones, it always says a certified forester. I assume the intent is that the forester, every instance, should, it should say certified?
Uh, yeah, should we?
All right. The tree preservation plan does not say certified, so I.
It just says forester?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a, that's a good catch.
Yes, we might want to take a look at.
Muted. We might want to take a look at the language because I know that there is some, like, specific language around foresters that might, it might be not be, the term might not be certified. It might be some other term. So I, whatever that term would be, would be something we could look at.
Yeah.
Just to.
Not my expertise, so I'll defer to others, but because the other two instances do say certified forester.
All right. Okay, now moving on to the landscaping ordinance. We have requirements for developments to incorporate a certain amount of landscaping and then maintain the landscaping over the course of two years so that we can see it established. And we want to make sure that we're actually putting measures in place to ensure successful establishment of the landscapes that we are requiring. And right now, there are some barriers in place to that that we'd like to adjust. So why are changes needed? When we're meeting out on site to inspect the trees that have gone in per the landscape requirements, contractors, in a lot of cases, you know, didn't understand exactly what the project requirements were or the warranty requirements. So not only are they not installing trees correctly and setting them up for success, but they're not maintaining them throughout the warranty period, and then we're having to go back and forth with them, which nobody wants. Nobody wants to be, you know, told they have to rip out their work and replace it. And so what we want to do is set up an initial site meeting and be a part of that so that we can lay out very clearly what the expectations are, how they need to be planted per, per the, the standards. And here's what the expectations are. Here's how it should be done. If it's not done this way, it's going to be rejected. And here's when we're coming out to inspect. So we just want to make sure that we're putting all of these things in place so that we're very clear, and hopefully we can get it done right the first time. So one of those things is clarifying the landscape plan graphic standards, making sure that the plans are readable and include all of the information that we, as the landscape architects, need to ensure that the trees that they're proposing are going in in the right places and not having conflicts with utilities, easements, or other grading. We want to make sure that what they're putting in is going to be compliant, again, with the MINDOT standard planting details. Again, heavily researched industry standard. We want to incorporate a pre-installation conference, which I mentioned prior to planting, so that they can meet the city's landscape architect, know what the expectations are, and then prove to us that they know how to do it before they install. And then we have also prepared a landscaping checklist that we'd like to go through with them just to show, you know, crews aren't always super experienced in installations, so making sure that they know how to properly plant a tree. And then we also want to require detailed watering requirements. Currently, provisions for irrigation are required, but it's pretty vague. And so if they're not providing an actual irrigation system, we'd like to just have them document how they're going to be watering and caring for the trees once they're in. Other changes, no planting, not just within a utility easement, but within five feet because we all know that trees grow over time and sometimes overlap with that easement. And then again, that language clarification to a licensed landscape architect. The warranty, we're not changing the timeframe of it, but we're clarifying that if they don't comply with the warranty requirements within that two-year period, it will be extended until they've achieved approvals. And that it'll only be approved. And that it'll only be approved when all of the landscaping reaches acceptance. We get a lot of pushback, um, from certain folks about, uh, well, let's just wait and see, and that ends up leading to delays. So we just like to see it done right, properly the first time, um, and then they can get their surety released. And then, like I said, we want to make sure that they're, um, doing all of the replacements and all of the corrections that are required. And then inspection schedule, currently, because we have a two-year, um, warranty, we have been inspecting for that initial, um, inspection to make sure that they've put everything in that they said they would per code, and then at year one and then at year two to close out. There's no surety tied to that first year's inspection, and so we don't have a lot of leverage there for, um, them to make corrections, and so we're proposing-
Do you need some leverage?
Say that again?
Do you need leverage?
I think it would help. However, the really crucial parts are the initial acceptance and then that final acceptance at year two.
Right.
We've talked about if we receive complaints from residents that landscaping is not being cared for in that interim year, that we would happily go out, um, and issue, um, you know, a memo outlining what needs to be done. However, yeah, it wouldn't be, unless it's backed by-
Or is there a, um-
Additional surety release.
Instead of using the stick, is there a carrot that can be offered up? That wouldn't, uh, make somebody want to make sure they do those steps? Is there an interim surety bond release or maybe there's an increased initial amount and then you can get some of it back for taking care of it? Just a, just a thought in that.
I think it's a worthwhile thought.
Could consider it. Right now, seventy-five percent is released with the initial acceptance and then we keep-
Maybe, maybe you drop it to fifty initially, give them twenty-five if they're doing all their, dotting all their i's and crossing all their t's. I worked for MINDOT for fourteen years and they do a lot of things great, and one of the things they do is, is their landscaping. And I, I thought we had something that was more on a, a graduated schedule, so it wasn't so much upfront and then, but, um, man, it's just a thought.
I think it's worth considering. My only hesitation is that having done the full inspections for initial first year and second year, it is a huge time commitment, and so if we were able to only do first year inspections on sort of a case-by-case-as-needed basis, we would have more time to devote to making sure that initial inspection went well. And then, again, we're adding in these pre-installation meetings and then making sure that that, um, final second year inspection goes well. That's pretty typical. Typically, when you have a warranty for landscaping, you're not checking in intermittently until the warranty's done. And I do have confidence that with this pre-installation meeting and the increased communication channel between ourselves and the contractors and the folks doing the work, um, that we will see better work. But right now, we're just kind of dealing with how it's been done for the last few years. All right, last point. Currently, the code says they have a thirty-day response window, um, to address issues. That can be really tricky with weather and sourcing products, and so, um, we propose keeping that to sixty days. All right. So I have two motions before you today. On the screen.
You have a question. Councilmember Holtz.
On the update where it's a watering plan and schedule shall be provided, da-da-da. And in this case, it's by licensed, um, landscape architect. By you or by theirs?
By theirs.
So what if their plan doesn't pass muster for the watering?
Oh, the watering plan?
Like, they have one, it just, is there an objective criteria to say, your proposal stinks?
Oh, I mean, yes, although we could write it into code. The typically, the thing that I typically say is if we haven't received one inch of water in, in the past week, then you would be required to water. And then we can look at weather reports and that sort of thing to confirm.
Does the language right now allow, because I'm just looking through everything, and maybe I need to scroll more for where it says, and everything here is at the approval of the city's landscape architect, so specifically the, then, the water-
The watering plan would be approved?
So I assume that language is there?
Yeah, so that they could come up with a, a, a plan and then we would review it and either approve it or-
So above and beyond a watering truck, what are, are other entities using? The bags on the bottom?
Yep, um, the, the gator bags or trying to think of the non-commercial term. There's watering rings that they can use as well. And we don't want to be specific about exactly what product they use, so if they come to us and they have a plan for it, we would review.
Thank you.
One question. On the last slide with the sixty days, that was for if they did not, uh, meet the, at the two-year warranty, if the standards weren't being met, you were expanding from thirty to sixty days. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. And in some cases, that ends up moving to the next growing season.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So if, if we need to get that, make sure that the word forester in that instance doesn't need to be certified or checked against that, do we need to make some sort of, uh, change to this motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I don't know how urgent this is. I mean, you could just direct staff to make the changes that you've discussed in this meeting and then have them bring it back and put on the consent agenda.
If we're unsure, I'd like to make sure on that. Maybe you guys want to nugget on this, because I, there's nothing more frustrating than inspecting something and having somebody just nod their head, but they're non-responsive and you can't get them to move it. But I've often found that if there's an incentive for the contractor to actually do it right, they'll, and it involves money, right? That, that, they'll, they'll be much more adept at that. So maybe that, that's something and, and maybe I'd, I'd make a motion to, uh, table this until we can fix that.
I support.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling this until we can get it back and, uh, some of those fixes or those ideas, uh, fleshed out? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Yes.
The term certified forester is foreign to me. I don't think that exists in Minnesota statutes anywhere. Three twenty-six is all your professional registrations, architects, engineers, landscape architects, geologists, whatever. I just don't ever recall seeing the term certified forester.
It's not in that, it's not in that acronym, but I-
Yeah, which bothers me because, you know, what organization provides a certification? And why wouldn't we just require a landscape architect? But that can be looked at in the context of what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think it needs to-
I, I just, I was able to Google while Sarah, or the city's landscape architect was doing, uh, her presentation. My finding is the Society of American Foresters, a national organization, does provide a certification for forestry professionals. So if that's a familiar organization that would be trusted, I would appear that the term certi- certified would make sense. So I guess that would be where, uh, where I'd start.
Sure.
All right.
We'll, uh, rely on you guys to flesh that out, thanks. Appreciate your time, nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to approve statewide volunteer firefighter pension increase, which is resolution twenty twenty-four dash one three one. Chief Kales.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, I've got a resolution before you to increase the benefit level for our volunteer firefighters, our paid-on-call firefighter staff. With me tonight is Captain Mike Schwartz, who's also the president of our relief association. Just to catch you up to speed a little bit here, um, last year, we made the move from maintaining our own, uh, pension fund and moved our, uh, the relief association dollars into the statewide volunteer firefighter plan, which is administered by, uh, Minnesota Para. We entered that plan in January of, uh, twenty twenty-four, and, um, when we went in, we went in with a, a slight increase over the pension amount that the, um, paid-on-call firefighter staff were earning at that time. And tonight, we'll, uh, we're asking for an increase to that, um, benefit. So just a little history on the, uh, on the SVF. Any of our fire state aid by statute, um, automatically goes, the full amount goes to this, uh, pension plan, and it's directed simply for, um, the volunteer fi- paid-on-call firefighter pensions. And since we moved to the SVF, um, the, the relief association born, board no longer, um, approves the increase or, or moves that forward. It's now on the, it's now a requirement to the city and ultimately up to the city council because the, uh, SVF plan now is basically, uh, administered and overseen by the city, not so much the organization of the, uh, relief association. We can only go for an increase, um, once a year, and it goes in effect January first if approved. And the city cannot decrease the benefit amount. With the SVF, uh, we now receive an annual funding report, um, very similar to some of the audits and other information that we've gotten, uh, we've received in the past. This July was the first time that we've received this, uh, report from Para, and we receive it annually. When we got the report in, it was reviewed by myself, the relief association, and the finance department just to kind of see what this new document looks like and, and what kind of information's being provided by the state. Attached to the, um, to your packet is the full, um, report that was provided to us in July. I just want to include one of the summary forms, uh, in the presentation. What we look at when we're, uh, um, kind of looking at our, at our account is the funding ratio to make sure that we have enough funds to cover the, um, the benefit level. And I can let Mike speak here in a second on kind of some of the, how, how we end up to some of those numbers. But, um, as of July, our funding ratio was a hundred and forty-seven percent funded. We kind of look at that number as we, we move forward. One of the things that we wanted to do, once we received this, is, um, put a request into, uh, Para. We have, um, we had one, uh, significant payout, um, at that time, and we're anticipate, or we will have another one in first quarter of next year. And when I talk about a significant payout, we have a, you know, thirty-two-plus-year member that's going to retire. That takes a huge portion of our current liability away. We're really curious from, uh, the Para's perspective on what happens to that, um, what happens to our fund when we remove that, um, liability. So the, the slide I have in front of you right now, they provided, um, what our current contribution is at seven thousand dollars. If we make incremental increases at one hundred, two hundred, um, our proposed eight thousand, and then, um, kind of the, the far end of, uh, of an eleven thousand dollar benefit. What does our funding ratio do knowing that we remove, uh, a large portion of that liability? If we move forward right now based on the numbers that were provided to us at the beginning, beginning of October, we come in at eight thousand dollars, our funding ratio actually increases from where we're at to about a hundred and fifty-six percent funded. So what that tells me is our, our, our fund's in great shape. Making this move, um, you know, not an extreme jump in the benefit is a smart move to make. And it, you know, what we try to do is maintain as little impact to the city as we can, meaning any kind of municipal contribution, um, to mine and Mike's knowledge, you know, the city has not had to contribute any dollars to the, the, um, pension benefit, and that's kind of our intent moving forward as well. But making this move now, you know, we're, we're still around a hundred and fifty percent funded, and that's, uh, pretty high. Para doesn't give us a number of what we should be at, other than it's always good to be at a hundred percent. Internally, I think we've discussed, you know, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty is kind of the ideal, but, um, we also don't need to make massive moves. You know, we, we're still new to the SVF, there's still some unknowns out there in the financial world, but we feel confident making this move now that, um, there would be no municipal contribution, and, uh, we're still able to make progress on increasing the benefit. Mentioned funding, the, like I said, the main source of funding is, um, fire state aid from the state of Minnesota, and we receive that annually. Um, it's allocated, uh, based on property values, population, and commercial property values. And it's definitely helped subsidize pension costs across the state for, um, local governments and, and relief associations. It's only geared to provide that, um, retirement benefit to volunteer paid-on-call firefighters, and state statute dictates, you know, exactly what that has to be used for. There's a long formula of how the state aid is developed. I won't go through this word by word, but it, because we have seen development growth, um, we're fortunate to see our state aid allocation increase because of our property values, our commercial growth. Um, that's a direct correlation to what we see in our, um, fire state aid amounts. You can see in twenty twenty, uh, we received, um, just size seventy-seven thousand dollars in fire state aid, and, uh, this year, a hundred and forty-five thousand in fire state aid. So that's another reason why we're seeing that even though we increased the benefit level, we removed some liability, we're still able to see, um, as we propose, uh, a benefit level increase, why we're able to do that and why our funding ratio maintains that, you know, a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty percent funding. Do you want to show you where we kind of compare to other cities? The relief association model has, and, and the pension model has changed dramatically over the past couple of years, especially with the, uh, introduction of the SVF model. More and more departments are going to it because frankly, it's very difficult. As some of you know who have been a part of our relief association meetings and seeing the inner workings, it's a lot to take on for just a group of individuals to really do, um, on an occasional basis. So, um, the move to the SVF to us is a, is a, was the, the best move to make, and we're glad we made it. But just to show you where we're at, um, comparable to other cities, not everybody has a relief association anymore. If there's an apartment that has made a move to complete career staff, um, they don't have a relief association anymore. If they do, it's to maintain for members that have, uh, are no longer there or have retired and have deferred pensions. But Bayport's at ten thousand, seven hundred dollars, um, Lower St. Corvalli is going to go up to fifty-five hundred next year. Montevideo's at seventy-nine hundred, North St. Paul's seventy-two hundred. Stillwater's making an increase to eleven thousand dollars a year, and Van Nuys Heights is at seventy-eight hundred dollars. So with us going to eight thousand, I feel we're still pretty competitive. I know there's, based on our fund and our, our, what we're looking at, you know, dollars and cents, there's still, you know, continued room for improvement. And I'll, you'll probably see me appear annually as, as the fund works and we work with the finance department to make sure we're in line and, um, you know, outside of hourly pay, this is the only benefit that our paid-on-call firefighters, um, get from the city. And it's, you know, really from the state dollars that we get that really makes this fund work, so. With that, I'm here for questions, if you have any, and, um, recommend, recommendation for the, um, approval of the resolution, and I'm sorry, I didn't update the resolution number. I believe it's one thirty-one.
Well, you answered one question I had, which was, has it been beneficial moving to the SVF? I think the one thing, and I don't know if Councilmember Beckstrom would agree with me, but it would, it just seemed to me that, uh, fund managers weren't, you weren't getting a percentage return on your investments that was compensatory to with the amount of money that you had in the fund. And I'm assuming that moving, congregating those funds to maybe a larger one, that's turned out better in the overall?
Yeah, I'll let Mike kind of speak on that and-
Yeah, I think it's, it's difficult with our kind of current market dynamic to, um, compare those two yet.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're kind of an inflationary market, but we still see our increases this year. We went from, I think we moved one point two million, and now we're up to one point six, so almost one point seven.
Great. Any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one thirty-one, a resolution opting to increase the benefit level for a- the benefit level for firefighters who are vested in the statewide volunteer fire plan to $8,000 per year of service.
Second.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion? Thank you for bringing this to our attention. All those in favor of approving resolution number 2024-131, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number 17, we have solar farm letter of intent for 3M priority two grant funds. And I believe that we have EDA Commission Member, Mr. Manzera presenting on this. The pup park. It's getting, yeah, I've gotten some nice compliments on that. Do you go in the big area or do you use the little area?
Oh, the big area. My dogs think they're big.
All those dogs think they're big.
Those little dogs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Tony Manzera, a member of the Lake Elmo Economic Development Authority. And I'd like to just give a little bit of background and a little bit of future possibilities on this issue of the, basically getting Lake Elmo a benefit from the priority two allocation of the 3M State of Minnesota settlement on the PFAS problems. And as Angie Hong mentioned, Lake Elmo was probably disproportionately harmed by the release of PFAS from our, from our landfill. And so, I want to make sure that we have the best chance of getting some money out of that fund. Just a little bit of background, the original plot from 1948 shows just south of Lake Jane, there are government lot five. And, and the current picture, aerial picture shows just south of the Lake Elmo pup park where the, where the issue, the land of issue is, the closed landfill. When it was, when the last closure was done in 2014, it was built up as a mound rather than a flat surface. So, it somewhat limits what you can do with it, even over and above the issue of not disturbing it, you also have a hill there to deal with. Just to really condense history, the land was owned privately for many years.
Tony, would you, would you mind getting a little closer, pulling those closer to you, please?
Sure. Yeah, the land was under private ownership for many, many years. And then the county received ownership of the land. And when the gravel operation that was being done came to a close, it was decided that they could use it as a landfill. And at that time, there was no liner put in and the garbage was just dumped into the water. So, this was a problem. The counties from, think of the time of the Vietnam War when this happened, the counties were, were charging a tipping fee to dump waste into the landfill. And the fee ran from, it started at 20 cents a cubic yard for uncompacted fill and ended up at 45 cents for compacted fill. They put a total of almost 3 million cubic yards of material in there, which means that the county got a revenue between 1 and 2 million dollars for the whole dumping of stuff. Of this waste, 73% was municipal, 26% industrial and 1% demolition waste. So, the site was closed in 1975 and that's when the problem started. First volatile organic compounds were found, which were, of course, were dumped there as part of industrial waste. It was found that the groundwater was leaking out of the landfill. Of course, there is no liner. So, people started to do a pumping to try to counteract the seepage out of it. This was somewhat complicated, but in fact, it was generating a bunch of methane. And so, eventually by 1984, it was, it became a super fund federal program. It was declared a super fund site and also a Minnesota state site. And for some reason in 1987, due to high water in the areas around the tri lakes, the Valley Branch Watershed District was pumping water through there, which flushed some of the waste out and downstream. And all due to the gradient pumping to try to reduce the outflow from the landfill, they pumped it out and sprayed it in the air, which is great for VOCs because they're, they're destroyed by sunlight and oxygen, but perfluor chemicals are simply spread into the wind and are not affected by that. They're, they're unreactive under those circumstances. In 1993, there was explosion in the, in the valve house because of methane accumulated in there. And, but in 1995, the, the report says that based on the stability of the site and what was going on, there was no real danger to public health outside that area. All of this was before the whole PFAS, PFA issue came up. So, the site was removed in 1996 from the super fund thing. And in 1996, they put in a new landfill cover and active gas extraction. They were, they started flaring the methane. They didn't build a thermal power plant to utilize it. They basically burned it. Okay, and in 2002, they started drilling wells and extracting methane and moving groundwater. There was a lot of work, a lot of money put into this thing. And then in 2004, the whole issue of PFAS was, was raised. And they started thinking about that being the most problematic issue of the whole thing. The spray irrigation was stopped and then in, by that time, the land was under city ownership, so it was our responsibility. And in 2013, it was zoned for solar power. And in 2014, there was over $4 million general obligation bond was, was used to do the, the current situation where they, they basically dug up the, the material and put a liner in there and capped it and built a hill out of it. Here's the ordinance where it was zoned for solar power. The current status, if we wanted to do something with this land that the city owns, you'd have to require the general obligation bond before any beneficial use could be made. The original, the bond that was done in 2014 amounted to 4 million, 294, et cetera. So, at 40-year retirement rate, there's about a little over 3 million left. The idea of the, what we're trying to do in this letter of intent is tell the trustees, that is the MPCA and the DNR, that we want to ask for money to pay off that general obligation bond so that we can do something useful with this rather than have a white elephant on our hands. The process has been delayed. It was supposed to count, Councilmember member Holt and interim administrator Hunt and Jim, Jim Kelly and Howard Marcus and I were on the team that talked about how to do this RFP. And it was going to be a letter of intent, which would kind of, you're buying a ticket to turn in a proposal, but it doesn't require you to do, do a proposal. And then I suppose if you're invited, then you can go ahead and turn in a proposal. And what I'd like to do is go ahead, and the EDA has said that this has made sense, put in a letter of intent so that we at least have our foot in the door to get some of this So far, I've been looking into a lot of the necessities and talking to people that, that would have to approve of this, Hans Navy, who reviews designs on closed landfills, Jennifer Hessmer, who is the state of Minnesota official who deals with bonding issues, some people from engineering companies. There is one that called landfill solar that has what looks to me to be a perfect design for this kind of a sloping, sloping system. Mary Kay Olson of Cooperative Energy Futures, who understands the connectivity to Excel Energy. And so far, I don't see any showstoppers to actually proceeding with this if we had the money to do it. And if the RFP is published, which it should be, there is a Q and A session available to ask questions and hopefully sharpen up what we're trying to say here. If the LOI is accepted, I'll write a proposal and it'll be refitted by city staff and we'll submit it. And then we have to sit back and wait and see if they give us the money. So, that's what's going on.
Question, Tony. So, really, the only cost to the city at this point would be any staff time to review, proposal, submit it. Do we know that GOB, the general obligation bond, that that money that we get can be used to pay off that bond?
I don't know. That would have to be asked during the question and answer session.
Okay.
Would that be a logical use of funding from that allotment?
Okay.
And I've, I've put in a request to Ms. Hefner, Hessmer, to, to make sure that that is the exact amount of money that would be required.
Okay. And to clarify, you're talking about the Q and A session that occurs with the trustees?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Right, that is on the schedule. It's supposed to occur after the, after the LOI is required. And the, the, the whole point of not going any further now is that they haven't put out the format for the LOI, so that we don't know what we're supposed to write in it. But I'll deal, I'll deal with that.
They, they've been busy focusing on all the other dollars that are going quickly. Councilmember Beckstrom.
So, just for clarity's sake, as I look at the 3M settlement priority two project information in the packet, how, I guess I'm struggling to, to connect dots here between what, what you want to submit for letter of intent for the, for the funds, how that relates to the three goals?
There are, the, the three goals are the habitat restoration, which is goal one, and this would be submitted against that particular goal. There are two other goals. One is basically education and, you know, determination of fish advisories and deciding where people can fish safely. And the third one is to improve access to natural resources. And this particular LOI would be written toward the first goal.
So, I guess I'm still struggling a little bit with the interpretation of goal one. If I understand this correctly, we're wanting to remove a bond from property so we can lease it to a developer and make money on it versus, we want, we want that land to be usable versus restoring it for wildlife habitats and resources. So, I guess I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit with how it, how you tie this to the intent of the priority two goals. I'm just not seeing it, I guess.
Okay, well, the, in the discussion of what that should say by the, the combined working committee, the, the word terrestrial was put in there as well as, as aquatic. And so, we see this as a terrestrial habitat and what you do with it, whether it's going to be for deer hunting or whether it's going to be for making solar power, it's terrestrial habitat. And it is an eyesore on the city of Lake Elmo, which is useless, and if we restored it, it would be good for something. That's, that, that's, that's how I see it.
And I guess where I'm, again, struggling with this is we have contamination in our lakes and our fish and, I mean, are we, I, I know this is focused on the, the one property and, and getting money for that, but, I mean, frankly, I'd rather see us submit something to, that addresses our, our lakes and, and our fish contamination and that.
I am doing two other ones.
Okay.
One has to do with Sunfish Lake because we've adopted Sunfish Lake Park. We want to determine the, the extent of contamination and whether a fish consumption advisory is required, also to find out whether it's, whether the contamination is increasing or decreasing. If it's increasing, we, we can't do anything about it. It's coming in from underground. If it's actually decreasing or steady, there's a possibility of remediation. The, the one that I presented to the Parks Commission has to do with the access to natural resources and it would be to put a boardwalk across the Armored Sunfish Lake to allow people to have more access. So, those are the three that I, I can see doing. I've asked people at previous meetings whether any other proposal is coming out of Lake Elmo and I have heard of none. And this is something that had, either the city would have to step forward and say, we want to write a proposal or encourage volunteers to do that. I'm a volunteer.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jagic.
I read through quite a bit of this and I'm a little confused because since this is a GOB site and the bonds were not issued site-specific, but were bonds issued aggregate by the state, they say, they can't really identify how much went to each site. And so, how do you, how do you retire those bonds and, and build a solar farm on that site, given their, the bond's extend to 2045 or whatever?
Well, I spoke with Hans Navy about that and, and in, in the report that he was a co-author on, they attributed this particular amount of money, 24,294,000 plus to that particular site. And if it, if it's true, which I've been told, that it's a 40-year retirement of those bonds, then you can calculate how much it would be.
Yes.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if I'm, I'm hearing your question properly.
Typically, the bonds have a call date and you can't retire them until the call date. I don't know what they would be on these bonds, but I, I don't know, it seems from the information that was provided in the links, that for the, for the sites where their bonds are outstanding, it could be an issue to try and use those sites for other purposes until you figure out what to do about the bonds.
Well, that, and that's why we need to understand this better. But without the yellow eye, we, we don't have our foot in the door and we can, we're not even worth, it's not worth asking the questions.
Any more questions? Thanks, Tony.
Motion to support a letter of intent submission by Commissioner Manzera for 3M Priority Two Grant Funds for a solar project on Washington County landfill.
You have a second?
I'll support.
All right, discussion. Councilmember Holt.
Number one, thank you for putting in the time for this and also for the other letter of intents that you plan to submit. I, I also am not aware of any other entity, any other nonprofit, any other individual who has any plan to submit an LOI. Maybe they will. But I have not heard any, but I, I fully support this in that it's, there's only $20 million. And I've, I do agree this aligns based upon the discussions that we all had with the co-trustees. The language might not be perfect, but I, I do believe it aligns with the intent of trying to make sure that land is being restored so it can be used again. In this case, the land cannot be used in part because there is PFAS and there's obligation bonds preventing us from having a future use. There are many uses that cannot occur on this land based upon how it's zoned and we would not want to ever have certain uses on there. A solar project, which would provide revenues to the city or to what, how, there, there, that's way down the road. Who knows if this is even accepted by the co-trustees? They may have different priorities or different interpretation. That's entirely possible. They may prefer to spread it out to as many people as possible with smaller grants. Entirely possible. They, again, this is not their priority right. Their priority right now is priority one and the capital investments that are being spent. But with this, I, I appreciate that you're trying. And I, I think if this were to occur, it does provide a benefit to the city to help remediate a harm that occurred to us that no one here is to blame for, but it helps the future.
This is great that you put this together and taking the initiative to, to submit something.
something. I guess my, it's a question that doesn't need an answer necessarily, but maybe it's just some, some additional thought is, you know, why is the city, are we not pursuing anything on this? Where are we not taking the initiative to go after this twenty million dollars for whatever needs? We've got Clark as a special projects person doing water work stuff, so why, why are we not pursuing something? Why are we looking to others in our community to write letters of intents and come, come up with ideas? We should be connecting with our residents and figuring out what it is we can do. Early on in this PFAS issue, when I was on council, there was a lot of talk about what was happening in our lakes and, and not being able to eat the fish and things like that. And when were we going to be able to do something about that? And at the time, the focus was really on kind of that phase one work. And we're now to that phase where we should be looking at, what can we do about our lakes? What can we do about our fish? I mean, what do we do for our, our lake owners that are living on contaminated lakes? And so I would, I would much rather love to see a letter of intent submitted for something related to our lakes. I certainly appreciate the effort going into this. I think as, for me, I, I just struggle with being good stewards of a very limited twenty million dollars. And yes, we are ground zero, but we've also gotten some money. We've gotten land. We have had some remediation, and I, I guess I wouldn't want part of that twenty million dollars going to pay off a bond on any city's property. I'd want it to go towards our lakes and our fish and our natural resources and really fixing or figuring out what we can do about that versus putting a parcel back into producing income.
Just a question, did I hear, so you do have a second letter of intent that you're working on that would be addressing the contamination in the lakes with the fish?
Yes.
Is that something that you're planning to present as well, or I guess kind of we're in the process, are you with that one?
That, that one has been approved by interim Administrator Hunt and also by Administrator Schrader. And I spoke with Administrator Miller about it, that that would be done as a member of the Friends of Lake Elmo Sunfish Lake Park, because we adopted the park, and as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we are eligible to ask for a grant. And that grant will ask for, very much with what Councilmember Beckstrom is talking about, that is to understand how we could possibly clean up a lake.
And that could only be used for Sunfish Lake, then, that grant?
Right, because, because it's a small enough lake that you could consider doing something about it. Sunfish Lake is only eighty acres at the most, and fifty in some years. And Lake Elmo is a huge lake, if you look at the volume of water compared to Sunfish Lake. It would be an immense project to try to clean up Lake Elmo with any currently available technology. Sunfish Lake, you can imagine cleaning up if the groundwater is not bringing in more PFAS. If, if the PFAS was being brought in through wind deposition due to that spray irrigation, then there's no more coming in, and then you could think about how to remove it, and we have some ideas for that.
I mean, I guess I'll just, again, like everyone else has said, I mean, this is, it's, it's, it's great that you, as a volunteer, that you're doing this, and I agree, you know, maybe we could be doing more as a city as well. I guess I do have some of the same concerns as Councilmember Beckstrom of, with the, the goals of priority two and, and using those funds. I would hate to miss out on funds, but I also don't want to use those funds for something that maybe doesn't actually meet those goals how I am interpreting them. And for, I guess, kind of, like, I guess that was before my time, when a lot of the residents were mentioning with cleaning up the lakes for the fish, that does seem like it fits better with these goals. So as much as I hate to say I don't want to keep moving forward with this, I wonder if that effort would be, because if we start going down this road and it does get approved that this is something that is feasible, is that the way we want to spend? Would it be, I guess would be, are we looking, you said for the bond, we're talking four million dollars of that fund that we'd be asking for?
Yes, 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 that's correct.
So is that how we want to be using four million of the twenty million available?
That's all I can figure. Let me, let me make two points. One is that if the city council would like to appoint a staff member to work on the project that's been discussed by, to clean the fish, up the fish in Lake Elmo, I'm more than happy to consult with them. I'm, I worked on these materials at 3M myself, and I'm very, very knowledgeable about the materials and how they operate and how they're made. And so I'd be more than willing to consult with someone else who would want to work on this. But I myself do not have the time or capability to take on one more thing.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I guess maybe just one, because I think you obviously have more experience with this too. So with these trustees, I mean, if they see us as a city coming to them with four different letters of intent, do they start to look at these and say, well, which one do you want? Do you want all four of these? We can only give you one. I guess if you can speak a little to, if you can speak on that at all, I guess, how the trustees would see that if we're coming with multiple requests?
The trustees have had major problems. I spoke with, with Assistant Commissioner of the MPCA Kurt Kudelka at the, at the open session on PFAS in Wells in Lake Elmo that was arranged by Administrator Schrader. And he told me that the, the whole thing had been postponed for almost a year because of retirements and, and staff resignations. So what I'm thinking is that whoever takes this on at the MPCA is going to be a brand new person, or pretty much a brand new person. And so who knows what's going to happen? Whatever came out of the work, work groups, there was a government work group, a 3M work group, and a citizen work group. Whatever came out of that may or may not drive the decision. And so they are going to have a question and answer session. Anybody can, you know, enter and ask a question. Feel free to ask a question.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I look at it, you know, that there's three specific goals in here, and, you know, one of the wild things is you never know who's going to go after these priority two projects and what they're going to be for. And I just commend you on bringing this in front of the EDA, and at this point, it's just a letter of support. You know, these three that Tony's working on might be the only three they get. You know, it could be ten, it could be a hundred, it could be three, right? And it's really up to the trustees that have been assigned to that to determine whether it fits within the goal or doesn't fit within the goal. And prioritize what projects are worthy of this twenty million dollar spread and what are not. I, I fully intend on supporting Tony in his effort in trying to make some land that has been used by the county as a dump site, online, and then superfund site later, to something that can generate some green energy in the long run, whether it's to benefit us or the whole East Metro for some megawatt capability. You know, you don't know if, if she's going to dance unless you ask, so I guess that's where I'm at.
I guess from a staff perspective, and again, I guess I still go back to, I think that's a great point, right? Three show, it could be three that show up and that's it, and it could be a hundred, and hate to miss out on any of it. I just, I still agree that I think it is a very good chance that that is maybe not, they could see that it doesn't align with those goals, so what I'd hate is to miss out on any opportunity. So is it possible, from a staff perspective, if we do have an LOI that has more to do with goal number two, where it's discussing as far as like the increasing the understanding of the fish tissue contamination, improving, actually still more with goal one, restoring, protecting, enhancing aquatic resources, wildlife and habitats. You know, I think, again, what Councilmember Beckstrom was bringing up with the lakes and being able to eat the fish, being able to fish and use the lakes for those, to me, that seems like it fits more with that goal, and I feel like we'd have a better chance of ensuring that we do actually have an LOI that is approved by the trustees. So I don't know from a staff pers, I guess that's my question. From a staff perspective, is that something that we can look at doing, or is that too much time, out of the question?
I guess I would have to talk to staff as well to find out. I'm not, and maybe just get more clarification on what the council is wishing to explore, since I wasn't part of the initial conversations either.
I think it's something certainly we could ask whether it's part of the strategy session or in a workshop or something to that nature related to, you know, restoring, protecting, enhancing.
Maybe that would be a good workshop, and just kind of in general with this.
Right.
Priority two, what else would Lake Elmo benefit with those? How could we use those three goals to help Lake Elmo?
Sure. Councilmember Holt.
And one additional item, I guess for context, the language with these three goals, the reason why goal two was about understanding fish tissue contamination was, it was made explicitly clear by MPCA and DNR that if lakes are already polluted, the PFAS, in this case, it's in the fish because they're getting it from organic life that is in there, and it's also already in the silt in the bottom. In the case of Lake Elmo itself, the PFAS, the access is continuously coming in. So goal two was changed to be an understanding of fish tissue contamination, whereas number one, an example that they provided, was increasing access or enhancing resources might be, your lake is polluted to the point where you can't eat fish, so maybe it means building a dock at a different lake so you can go there.
Okay.
That, that's kind of where they're discussing it, because that, the, as Tony was mentioning, the issue of understanding is one thing, and each lake is different throughout the whole plume in terms of, is it still happening? And in case Lake Elmo and Horseshoe Lake, the flow is continuing. Maybe, maybe, again, maybe for Sunfish, it might be different. But they were, they were very clear on making goal two more about that and the aspect of the sheer scale to restore a polluted lake to the point where you could eat the fish is not coming from this, this twenty million.
Okay, that makes sense.
But I totally get, I, I think a, you know, a workshop would probably be good moving forward, because there's been delays and delays and delays on this, and I, I think we still can, I don't want to throw it to staff, you know, here and go do this, but I think it's worthwhile discussion. Are there other opportunities here and there that puts smart people in a room, lock them there, and say, come up with a couple of ideas? Yeah. In addition to this.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for that clarification, that does help.
Totally.
I'm going to call the question on the motion to support a letter of intent submission by Commissioner Manzera for the 3M Property Two Grant Funds for a Solar Project on Washington County landfill. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Let the record note that surpasses four one. Thanks, thanks, Tony. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Shilken Park Construction, Mr. Swanepoel.
Counsel. Several months ago, I was in front of you, and we discussed actually the naming of Shilken Park. Today, we come in front of you to discuss the construction of the park as we move forward. As we know, Shilken Park is about twenty-nine point nine acres. This park is, does have a DNR conservation easement on it, so we are prohibited from any commercial use in the area. We're limited to altercations to the topology of it, as well as physical features in that area, other than routine maintenance that we may conduct on there. Restrictions also are construct, are construction of buildings, storage of any vehicles or any other items there, but also prohibits any beaching or watercraft items there as well. Plans do not propose any water, water-based recreational facilities or docks on this property as well. As we look at the proposed lot, we do see a large area that we will be taking over as the park, all city property. And as Jack has spoken in his presentation too, this is kind of a leadway for a lot of our downtown areas to have a larger park to, for, for, for park use as well as nature, nature trails. That is our proposal towards the city council with the land use here, is to construct a nature trail throughout the, throughout the area. We may be limited with those, with this, with this DNR conservation use in it, we are limited on many things in this area, but this trail will be construction, will be constructed beyond the high water level markings that was actually done prior to us by the developer. There, most of that, oh, sorry. During that construction, we'll construct about a mile and a half of trail throughout the park. Public works staff has mapped out the area, and we'll map the constructed trail with the use of fecon mulching head. So much of this area is, does have mature trees, but throughout the park, it is a lot of buckthorn and invasive species as well. So with this mulching head we'll go through, we'll make a single trail throughout there, outlined in blue there, throughout the whole park. We'll also incorporate some benches, picnic tables, a kiosk, bike rack, and a park sign throughout the park as well. I did want to note that the trail that we do intend to put in there does get close to the back of these properties. As we know now, there's no houses there, but as they do get built, we plan to keep that five-foot buffer from the backside of those properties with an eight-foot trail. We are looking to have that center of that trail approximately eight to nine feet behind the backside of this property. So this is just an illustration, again, where that trail will go on the backside of those properties, along with that park on the east side, or sorry, the west side. There is a very steep slope, so we will be bonded right up to the property lines to make that happen as well. Some of the benefits of that, that is that the trail will remain on city property throughout the park. It will be, it will connect the city path along kind of Route fourteen in Lake Elmo Ave that the developer will put in on the far east side. As far as our construction of items, again, we'll plan to put benches throughout the area, we're proposing four benches throughout that'll look over not only the lake, but over the topology of the, the large hill on the east side of that park. Plan to incorporate our normal park sign that'll go at the entrance of Kingston and Thirty-seventh Street, right at the intersection there. So as people do come in on that drive, they will see that sign within that development. We do plan to put two picnic tables as well. These will be open areas, one on the north, northwest side as well as the south side. These areas, we did identify as staff as having a large amount of buckthorn, but we could open up that areas to make kind of a wider area just for, for recreational use for picnicking and things like that. It was brought up by the Parks Commission, as this area is, bike use is our second most used source of transportation to and from our parks. So it was brought up by our commissioner and our Parks Commission to possibly add this. As staff, we did discuss that and thought that'd be a great amenity as well to add to that. Since these are nature trails, it won't be utilized for bike, biking, that they can park at those entrances and walk throughout our park. We'll also be incorporating two kiosk signs, one at each entrance. The far north end of the development won't be developed yet, so we're planning to put these, just to outline the trail so that users can understand the trail system throughout the park. At that, I'll take you. At that, I'll take any questions.
So the, the kiosk, no, no bike use on the, on the trails?
That's our intent, yes.
Is it gonna be for season use or is it winter? Any plans to do anything with the trails during the winter?
Yeah, we planned to, uh, also.
Oh, sorry.
Groom.
Groom them as well as part of our grooming.
For skiing, snowshoeing, or hiking for, okay. But still not for like the, the fat tire bikes during the winter as well, okay.
Um, plan on using mulch for the trail?
Yeah, so as the mulch will go through, we'll make like a, uh, just a regular mulch, uh, throughout there, but throughout, if there is lower areas that we had, do have to go through that might be condensed with water, that might be an option that we could do just to keep it up out of that water.
Sure. Okay. Councilmember Holt.
As you're going south from the southern park bench, uh, when do you hit Batuminas or, or trail? And, and do you gotta, will any of that in the lower part by the developer be a Batuminas trail? Or essentially, I'm looking at kind of the diamond shaped loop southwest of the barn?
So there'll be no Batuminas, um, until you get to the far east side.
So to the east of the barn?
So the county does plan to put a Batuminas trail at some point along 14.
That connecting or Greenway or whatever they've got going on?
Correct. And I haven't seen plans of it to be on the north side and the south side of 14.
There was some preliminary stuff showing it on the, on the north side of 14. So we're right now proposing just to mow a trail along 14 with the intent that it will be likely asphalt at some point. And the, that's not an issue right now in terms of safety or the right of way for, for that? No, we're outside of the right of way. All right, correct. Thank you.
Just, um, with the North Star development, do we know the houses that would be backing up to that trail? Is that a later phase of that development?
This is still the first phase, this section here is.
So, okay.
This phase up on the north side would be a possible second or third phase. Um, so that won't be, we won't see that for several years.
And I presume like as I'm looking at 3606 or 3610, y- you can't shoot a trail west because the slope there is literally is 50 feet down in a matter of a pitching wedge.
That was pretty quick. And some of that area seems to have been trailed before by Mr. Shilken or his grandkids or whatever.
Yes, I did speak with them, uh, regards to the naming of the park. Um, and he did, they, they, exactly what you said, they did mow a, a bunch of this. They actually, uh, I think they round bailed a bunch of the, these items down here, but also had a trail throughout, so.
Quite a few deer stands back there.
Hmm, serious.
Any more questions for Mr. Swanepoel? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the construction of the trail as proposed in the new Shilken Park and purchase of amenities to be installed in the park in the amount not to exceed 25,000.
Support.
Discussion?
Great work on it. I think this is going to be, I mean, obviously it's in the area of Sunfish Lake anyways, but this is a fantastic jewel to add to it, and I appreciate that it is a very low-impact park as well in terms of, uh, this is go-walk in nature.
I agree. All right, I'll call the question. Adam, you took away my motion.
Oops.
All those in favor of approve the construction of the trails proposed in the new Shilken Park and purchase of amenities to be installed in the park in an amount not to exceed $25,000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number 19 is appoint planning commissioners. Today, we had interview with three planning commissioners, understanding that we have a couple of people coming off of the planning commission. And, why can't I keep that up there? So we had interviews. Uh, two of the commissioners, Kyle Rizner and Brian Stile will be ending their terms at the end of, uh, this month. So we have two vacancies on the planning commission for terms ending in 123125. And was it, uh, what do we have? One for a three-year term?
We have two through 27 and two through 25.
Okay, two through 27, one, yeah, one, okay.
We have three.
Three. Three applications.
Yep.
So move to appoint Ms. Jane Chars to the planning commission for a term ending in 12312027.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Ms. Chars to the planning commission for a term ending 12312027. Any discussion? Hearing none. Last question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Move to appoint Mike Amen to the planning commission for a term ending 12312027.
Support.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, motion to appoint Mike Amen to the planning commission for a term ending 12312027. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Move to appoint Ms. Susie Dunn to the planning commission for a term ending 12312025.
Support.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Susie Dunn to the planning commission for a term ending in 12312025. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're good on that note. Thank you very much. You stuck around to the very end. Good for you. Um, we did have an item, uh, moved from the consent agenda by Councilmember Beckstrom to approve agreement with Raftellus for public works department audit. Ms. Beckstrom, you need to call the question on your request to move that?
Yeah, so, um, so I had a few different questions on this, but it seemed like this operational audit, which I know that we have in our budget and has been planned for a while, um, it took a different path to get to us. Um, and so, um, I thought we should probably talk through this versus it simply being on a consent agenda when, when we're looking to, to spend 50, over $50,000 on this. In the past, with all of our other operational audits, we've done an RFP process and put out information. Did we, did we do an RFP process on this one? And so do we have documentation as to what exactly we're asking for?
Yeah, so we did not do an RFP process. I did direct negotiations with all these folks throughout the, um, fall and summer. And so actually, it was really helpful for the direct negotiations. It kind of flushed out the scope of the work. And so, um, I spent a lot of time starting with DDA really to, to flush that out. And then in the end, what we were really missing is that subject matter expert. They specialize more in administration and financial audits. So that didn't work out. But then, um, having a clear, um, scope, which is the proposals that I ended up getting back from Baker Tilly and Raftellus.
But what was that based on, I guess? So I, I didn't see in here, um, what we're asking of them. Um, and that's typically what we've seen, um, with these operational audits is, is there's specific things we want to get out of it. And usually council is engaged in some of that. Um, and, and so I don't see that in the packet at all. I see the, the, um, document from Raftellus on what they're gonna do, which is, um, appears for the most part to be somewhat of a canned report um, back to us and not necessarily real specific. Um, and, and also I'm, I'm curious if, um, if there was any discussion with current council members or staff about, um, when we use Raftellus for a previous audit.
Um, to answer a second question, no, no, I, I did not know. Um, our current staff was not around. I, I did, when I was doing the research, I did find out, um, Raftellus through using them in 2021. But the staff that participate in that project is no longer here to talk to them about.
I would encourage you to, um, review the November 20, I think it's November 2021, um, council meeting where they presented results. Um, there's three council members, current council members that were in that. Um, and, um, it was, what we got in return was not what we wanted or needed. Um, and so, and I know we've also used Baker Tilly in the past and had some mixed reviews on that as well. Um, which is why I wanted to bring this through because we were, we were not satisfied um, with the outcome of the Raftellus audit that was done for, um, I think it was our building, uh, building areas.
I mean, a building, yeah.
Yes, and, um, and I would not support going with them again, and I absolutely would not support going with them for $52,000. Um, and that was the other piece of this is, um, yeah, it's, when I look back at our budget, I think you referenced the administrative, um, consulting line item, which in the budget document looks like we budgeted 30,000?
Correct. That was a number I just swayed during the preliminary.
What I'm concerned about is that we have this request on our consent agenda that is $22,000 above what we had in our budget. That, that's troublesome to me. Um, I would think something well above what we would, haven't even approved the budget, but well above what we were targeting should warrant a discussion with council versus just going on consent agenda. Uh, but anyway, I pulled it because I, I feel like there needs to be a broader discussion on what exactly we're looking for. Um, I would like to see that documentation. Um, I frankly would prefer that we use an RFP process versus direct negotiations because you get a broader pool. Um, but also I think full council needs to be engaged in, in that because we're the ones then getting the report and reviewing and approving. So, um, and, and maybe this is better spent in a workshop versus here. And, and maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, but, um, that's a lot of money to spend when we were not satisfied the last time with them. Those are my two cents.
I'll have any questions to bring up some valid points?
Yeah, I was not here for the, uh, the 2021 meeting, but obviously if that was a, a major issue, not happy with the results from Ruff, which one was it again?
Raftellus.
Raftellus, and then again, some other previous not great experience with Baker Tilly, yeah. Um, yeah, I think that is a good point too, and, and maybe this would be better for an RFP. I kind of tend to agree with that as well.
Since we do have a subject matter expert on the council, I'd like to ask Councilmember Dragasich his opinion.
Well, you know, a lot of these type of projects are done through direct negotiation. Um, typically you, you do have a list of what are your expected outcomes, what do you want the consultant to do? Obviously have a, um, statements of what they're going to look at. Uh, and, and my experience with Raftellus is generally a pretty high-quality firm. The lead on the projects has been formerly managed public works departments, which was my big concern. Because I've seen a lot of these studies where the consultant comes in and you have anyone with expertise in a particular area. And so you get gobbled to go back like you've talked about because they never actually had to manage or supervise public works. It seems in the review of what they said they're going to do, it seems pretty, pretty thorough. Maybe one concern might be, you know, would, um, uh, and we didn't have the benefit of knowing what Baker Tilly proposed, would they have, uh, what was the difference between them in terms of, you know, outcomes that we're going to receive and, and the qualifications of the people that they had on the team? But, um, you know, that's a couple of, in the not-too-distant past, um, Raftellus acquired Novak Consulting. And Novak was a pretty strong competitor, pretty good firm. And I don't know if they were involved the last time Raftellus did the work or not, but Novak was always a very high-level national firm.
I think they were combining around that time.
Yeah.
Um, because we had some interchangeable. But one thing that I think we have learned with probably each of these operational audits we've done is that they write beautifully, they provide beautiful documents on what they're gonna do. And then when you get the results, it's, it's disappointing.
It just lacks, it, it lacks some, uh, correct me if I use the wrong terminology, but it, it, it seemed, if I remember correctly, lacked some specifics.
Yes.
I guess it was, it was a little a menagerie of, um,
It was generic.
It was pretty, yeah, it was pretty generic.
Generic and just taking comparisons of other cities and saying this is what we should do and saying we should staff up. And, and so I would really again encourage, um, encourage you to, to watch the November 2021 council meeting where we had the results. We had, um, I, I, he was high-level leader, um, who attended. And, um, yeah, there was, I don't know that anyone on council was real impressed with the results we got. It wasn't really, uh, in the end, what we needed or what we thought we were asking for, so.
Perhaps, perhaps the middle ground might be, because I, I think with the acquisition of Novak, it re-ratcheted up their, your qualifications. Because Raftellus was a, did utility studies, they actually did issue bonds for clients that these type of studies were not their strong suit. But maybe we could develop, um, a list of what we would like to have for outcomes and ask them if these are included in the scope of their work. And we could sit down, um, and I'd be glad to be a part of that. I've done probably 50 of these studies. Um, and say, here's, here's the kind of outcomes we would, specifically we would be looking for. Uh, I know you talk about they make these comparisons. In my experience, you know, the comparisons are, are very valuable, but you have to make sure who you're comparing to is actually comparable. And there's a lot of different criteria you would use as, as I was speaking with Nicole, you know, we're looking at a water system, you gotta compare similar water systems. Are they well? Because if they're not, if they're surface water, they're not comparable. And so you have to, you know, how, you have to look at those kinds of things. But I think we came up with a list of what we would, what we want to ask, are these deliverables we would receive? And how would you approach this and how do you approach that? We may find that their responses would be, yes, they were all included and we intend to give it to you. But we'd have then our expected outcomes that we want out of this, and they may very well all be in there. Seems a fairly broad-written proposal. My guessing is they are, but we could confirm that. And, um, and then, you know, know what we were getting and we'd have, we'd be able to hold their feet to the fire because you said you're gonna deliver three roses, four petunias, and six cucumbers. And, uh, we would, we would then be able to compare that against what we got. I think negotiation for these studies is not an uncommon way of doing them though, in my experience. It's just, you want to make sure that you're gonna get the deliverables you want, and they were, it's written fairly broad.
So, so my apologies, um, in my previous employer, we did direct negotiations. So I didn't have the history that RFPs are the preferred way here. Um, but I did have meetings with both Baker Tilly and Raftellus. Raftellus at least three times. Um, would it be, could we have both of them come in and do a presentation? Or a virtual presentation so you could also see where, would that be a, um, good solution?
That's what we've done in the past. That's why this surprised me that this was just on the consent is because we did, we have brought in, um, the, the respondents to present, um, what they're gonna do, where we can have those answers, ask questions, get answers. Um, but more importantly, I think that, that step before that really needs to be, as, as Councilmember Dragasich um, just talked about, is we have to, to really spell out what exactly we're looking for, what are our outcomes. Um, so then when we do get the report in the end. So then, when we do get the report in the end, we're sure that's what we're getting for, and we're sure that's what we're paying for. And I, again, am not comfortable with fifty-two thousand dollars for a operational audit when I don't know exactly what we're asking for, what they're going to deliver, or if that's the best deal we can get.
I, I guess I would appreciate a more defined scope of where we're getting. And if we could, you know, I'm sure, I mean, now all we see for, and again, I'm used to quantity-based item bids. So when I see, so when I see line items for cost proposals, just four of them, I'm like, well, that's, all right, what goes into that? So for me, I'd, I'd like to see a defined scope in what we're actually gonna get out of it. And I would like us to try and negotiate to something if there's some fluff there that we don't need, some things that we do need to get closer to the budget that we, we have. And I know budgets are flexible, and, you know, there's some plus and minus in there. But I'm, I'm not necessarily saying we have to go RFP on it, there's different ways of doing business, but I would like to have a better handle on what we expect them to deliver specifically. And if that's the cost to deliver that, then that's fine, but at least I know what I'm getting.
Agreed.
So I'm gonna move to table agreement with Raf Telus for public works department audit. Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table. Item number ten, that was under the consent agenda, move to the regular agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, table this until we can get a little clearer distinction on that. Council reports?
None from me.
Councilmember Holtz?
The airport commission had a meeting last Monday, and our very own Ms. Nicole Miller presented to the group about Lake Elmo. Gave a very good presentation, and it caused some good questions and back and forth with members as well. Long story short, there is continued feedback about noise that exists at an airport. And I guess a, a good conversation about what is within the control of an airport and what is not based upon federal regulations.
All right. Saturday night, show up downtown for Light Up Lake Elmo, or it's like from three to five, something like that, three to six. Hopefully, it'll be in the twenties. I, I know a lot of businesses, I think last year Thrive had smores out there for the kids for
Double and Double in this year.
Sticky marshmallow fingers and all that fun stuff. So please come together to that community event and have a good time. Councilmember Beckstrom?
No report.
No report.
No report. Staff reports?
No report.
All right, Julie?
No report.
No report.
No report.
No report.
No report.
Wow, all right.
Mr. Mayor, there is a closed session at the end of this meeting, just a reminder, otherwise, no reports.
Oh, I thought you were gonna finally have a report, it's been four years of no report. All right, so the city council will hold a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section thirteen point zero five D subdivision three A for the purpose of the city administrator performance review. Go into that closed session with a, I need a motion and a second, please. So moved.
Second.
Motion, second to go into closed session, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You, city council will